All right, good evening and welcome everyone. This is the Salem City Council meeting for December 3rd, 2012. We appreciate all of our visitors this evening and we have a full complement of councilors. So I will now call the meeting to order and ask the recorder to call the roll.
Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
President.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickie.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Blazy.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. Can we have the pledge of allegiance? Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now Counselor Bennett, we have additions, deletions, et cetera. Would you please introduce those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the council agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the additions and deletions and those are available, I believe, for the public as well. Are they over on the side? Perhaps? All right. And we all have them in front of us. Move for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have time for council comment. Do any councilors have comments this evening that they'd like to share? Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let council members know and the public as well that with the recent issues involving the health of teenagers and the loss of some teenagers in West Salem recently, that I'm confident that the city is working well with Pope County Public Health Department to petition the federal agencies for testing. And we have heard back from one of the federal agencies that they will be extending some assistance to help with making sure that there aren't any health hazard risks or if there are. But I'm real pleased that Pope County's got the lead on this. Commissioner Ainsworth and the Public Health Department of Pope County are working hard and meeting with parents and public and federal agencies and I feel very good that we're a part of that team and hopefully the federal agencies will come in and do the testing necessary to ensure that there is or is not any kind of risk at all for West Salem students. And I tend to think, not to single out West Salem, but this could happen in any part of where we live and so I'm real pleased that we're joining the effort to petition the federal agencies to come in and do that testing. So appreciate everybody's patience and I know it was in the paper a week or so ago, but we're going to do all we can to ensure that health and safety of our citizens is always our number one priority.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm glad that you mentioned that too as well. We have been in touch and coordinating with the other entities. Great. Other councilor comments? Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, there's a couple of information items later on the agenda. I doubt if anybody's necessarily pulling them, but just wanted to encourage people to look through the status of some current park projects and then the update on the streets and bridges bond roadwork. Lots of good things happening. Want to thank staff for some excellent work all the way around on that.
Excellent.
Coming to fruition on lots of projects.
Right. Thank you.
And then we'll duke it out later on down the road if there's extra money.
That's right. Thank you. Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let council know that, shoot, a week and a half ago now when we had the major rain here, I think it was on a Monday, we had some flooding again in South Salem out on Woodside Court and Marstone and areas that flooded last January. And on good news, we did not have flooding at Battle Creek or near the park down that direction. So that's a good thing. I think we did some, well, I know we did some major improvements on Battle Creek as it enters the Battle Creek property and I'm grateful to previous councils for having purchased that. That's a big thing for us. But I'm still working through things, going slowly, trying to make it right, but I'm going to be bringing forward a motion to try to help to alleviate this issue with Wallen Creek flooding back at this neighborhood because this is the only place in town or in the south side of Salem that flooded and it got into five houses that I know of. So I think it's something that's fixable. It's just something that has never been developed the way it needs to be developed for our storm system and I'm working with public works slowly. I'm having technical issues recently, but to work on a motion to bring to council here in the near future.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Nanki.
I just found that we had an issue on our desk tonight as well as an email in regards to sandbagging locations. I'm assuming that's up on the city's website if people are concerned over the next couple of days.
It is on the city's website and actually we've changed our homepage for the city's website so it goes to emergency information. We've established 11 sandbagging sites. We expect about two inches of rain over the next day or two because the creeks are already so high and the river's so high that there could potentially be some flooding. So we want to be prepared ahead of time and have those resources available for people.
Excellent. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Diane, Counselor Dickie.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that this Thursday at Pringle Hall at 6:30 I believe is the time, we're going to have an open house for our proposed Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we've been working on for about two years and so we'd like to have the public have an opportunity to take a look at that, let us know what you think and then it will be coming to council sometime soon. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for the work that you and Counselor Tesler have been doing for quite some time on the Parks Master Plan. Thanks again. Absolutely. All right. Other comments? I'd like to say thank you to city staff for the tremendous job on the Christmas tree lighting, the holiday tree lighting event at Riverfront Park. It was a stormy, wet, windy night and there was a great turnout. So, you know, the man in the red Santa suit will not be denied. People come out no matter what the weather is and I really want to say thanks to the staff because they really worked through the whole day and getting everything ready and it was a great event and I was so pleased that Oregonians as we are, we just muddled through the puddles and there we were. So the tree is lit. Hope everybody gets a chance to go by and enjoy that. Okay. Other comments? We're going to move on to a very nice presentation that we have regarding our Salem-Cowgoy Sister City report and I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Linda Norris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And you didn't have this ahead of time, but it's at your place and if you have questions after you've had time to read it, we can talk about it at another meeting. But we wanted to get back to you at this point to talk to you about the Sister City and Economic Development trip that Council President Bennett and I were on along with our Salem-Cowgoy Sister City group in October. For Counselor Bennett and I, it was a combination of our Sister City program and economic development promotion. I'll just tell you briefly and you'll have an opportunity to read more in the report. I've summarized what we did each day and have summarized the conversations we had with the different groups. We were in Cowgoy, which is our sister city and has been now for 26 years, for three days on Thursday through Saturday, in various economic development meetings as well as to meet with Mayor Quai from Cowgoy. There's 36 city councilors attended some meetings. We had a summit on Friday of that week for their sister and friendship cities. They have six sister and friendship cities and all were represented except the city from France and they were there by video. And we have, we did a presentation. The focus of the meeting was on community planning for the future. So Counselor Bennett prepared remarks about Salem. I gave a presentation on community planning, urban planning, city services, volunteerism, which is always very interesting because there's not as much volunteerism in some of the other countries that we deal with as there is in the United States. So they're always interested in learning more about that. And then on our community involvement processes. We had opportunities to meet with the Chamber of Commerce and other businesses. Some of the businesses were from people who have traveled to Salem before on Sister City events and some who the mayor and I met a couple of years ago when we were there for an economic development trip. We then, Counselor Bennett and I left Sunday to return to Tokyo for some meetings in Tokyo with Sanyo Homes. We joined the governor's trade mission that week and met with Panasonic, who is now the owner of Sanyo Solar. And they had a lunch, a business meeting, and also gave us a tour of some of their new sustainable products for schools, businesses, cities, hospitals, and homes, which is very interested. They're very interested in continuing their connections with Salem and with Oregon. We were invited to reception that the governor hosted for Japanese businesses who are either currently doing work in Oregon or hope to do work in Oregon or hope to have partnerships with other businesses here. Had an opportunity to meet with Yamasa and a few other companies to talk about their appreciation of Salem and their desire to continue their operations here and to thank the city for what we've done. And then we returned that next Wednesday. So I have included some insights about things I think we can do in the future and hope that we continue our economic development efforts. There's a lot of connections. There are a lot of connections between Oregon and Japan and that continues as part of, as we both look at economic development opportunities. And I think Council President Bennett would like to make some comments as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Manager. Yes, this was a, this was a really eye-opening experience. I'd never been to Japan. What was tremendously striking to me was how important the Sister City program is to the leadership and citizens of Cowgoy and how familiar they are with Salem, including a signpost in the middle of, this is a town of 200,000 or 300,000 people. It's really a city. It's quite large that points to Salem and tells how many kilometers away it is. And I was also struck by the, and I think it goes often unremarked upon, the work done by the Sister City group in town, particularly Linda and Arthur Berman. This is a very striking relationship. They are both honored and well-loved in Cowgoy and well-known in Cowgoy. It was very interesting. I have not attended any Sister City functions here in Salem and I will from now on. It is a program that all of us should participate in. It is an important relationship. It's one that we're building on and I think should continue to build on. It is certainly a focus of our economic development strategy over time, certainly not the only focus, but one of the focuses. As Manager Norris mentioned, we, the first dinner we had with them was with virtually the whole city council, this 36, which by the way, it's looked like full-time pay. They could not figure out what it is we do exactly as volunteers, how this works exactly. How do you spend this much time and why do you, you know? There were a lot of questions about it, but they take this extremely seriously and I really recommend as Sister City opportunities occur or visitors from Japan come over here that we all try very hard to participate in these events. It's both expected, it's honorific, it also is, I think, a valuable statement of our interest in retaining these kind of relationships. This was a really interesting experience. If any of you are ever approached about taking one of these trips, number one, get a lot of sleep before you go because it is extremely tiring. It's very stressful because nobody speaks English or very little and you're expected at a moment's notice to be prepared to speak on issues that you didn't know you knew as much about as you do. And it was really an interesting trip. Again, though, I can't, I can't praise Arthur and Linda Berman enough for the work they do and how well organized this was, how, and how valuable an experience it is.
Thank you.
Good.
And now from CCTV, are we going to have the video next or Mr. Berman, did you want to present the document?
Hi, I'm Arthur Berman, 4972 Shadow Hills Drive, Turner. And I'd like to also introduce a couple of our other members of the board. I'm here too. You want to just raise your hand or something? Okay. At any rate, I have a presentation from you, for you, from the city of Cowgoy that talks about the 26 years of friendship we've had that was given. We had a very elaborate signing ceremony that went along with our trip. So at any rate, I'd be happy to give this to you, to put in the council chambers or wherever.
Lovely. Well, Arthur and Linda Berman have been tremendous, tremendous, or don't leave, Arthur. You're coming back up here, have been tremendously helpful to the city of Salem and to the relationship that we've been able to have with our Sister City and with the businesses that are there as well. And I certainly am so honored and pleased to receive this and so nice to see the signatures on here from Linda and from Counselor Bennett and we will be displaying this. We're very proud of the relationship. So thank you for bringing this to us. Okay? Thank you.
And Mayor, if I can say, at the reception after the summit, both Arthur and Linda Berman were given special recognition for the just years and years of work that they've done with the Sister, Cowgoy, Salem Sister City group. And as Counselor Bennett said, they're very well-known and well-respected and Linda, actually it was part of her job when she worked here to work on the Sister City program and we're very appreciative of the fact that she's continued to do that as a volunteer since her retirement.
That is true. We do appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Shall we roll the cameras? All right. Dim the lights?
The middle ones up there?
Oh, sure. Oh.
This thing right there.
I think that's good.
Even the weather or warmth up against the street.
This is a watercolor from Mr. Carl Hall, who's our most famous artist in Salem and is of the ocean, probably around Yawas.
And the roof itself looks like the ocean full of waves. All these things are kind of talisman against fire because they were very, very afraid of fire.
I'm Chuck Bennett. I'm president of the Salem City Council. You have heard from our mayor and I want to again extend thank you for this opportunity on behalf of the Salem City Council and the people of Salem.
That city employees provide police, fire, emergency medical response, planning, parks, a lottery, senior center, clean drinking water, and transportation system.
This is a dashi that we're pulling. As hard as it was for the rest of us and as busy as we were every minute, he was doing the same things while carrying many pounds of cameras with him so that he could film everything as we went.
It's a wonderful document to have, really for the archives, for the city, to have the film and the memorabilia. I know you brought several pieces back as well. Wonderful. And the happy coat will be modeled in person soon?
I should have worn it tonight.
You should have worn it tonight. It was quite stunning, I thought.
Great fashion statement.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Public comment? Is a time now for people who have comments that they would like to share regarding agenda items? We have a few people signed up. Kenji Sugahara?
Yep.
On item 3.3.
Yep. Kenji Sugahara, 1730 Misty Place Northwest. And first off, konbanwa, which is good evening in Japanese. But Madam Mayor, members of council, thanks for giving us an opportunity to speak. I want to talk real quickly about the request to approve the manager to apply for the funds for Brown Road. This was originally brought up before me because Kevin Hartman over there was talking to me about projects that were pretty important to him in terms of safety and I thought it was really important because I looked at the road and I didn't see any sidewalks and there's paths actually along the side of the road where kids walk. So for me, that meant more than a lot of other projects that were available for funding. So I'm just going to talk in support of it because I think it's a, it's a great idea. It's going to improve safety for the kids and I'm not, I'm not a resident of the area. I'm a resident of West Salem. So for me, it's important. So that's all I got to say on that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate you coming tonight to share that with us. Thank you. All right. Scott Bassett on agenda item 4C. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members for the chance to speak to item 4C cancelling next week's public hearing on the $800 million third bridge. My name is Scott Bassett and I live in Ward 4. Although I work for ODOT, I'm here to express my views and those of Jim Shebkey. And we have a handout and if there are any of the folks who are here who would like a copy of the handout, please raise your hand and Jim will just, will provide one to you. You received outdated and misleading information from the Salem River Crossing staff at your last meeting, November 28th work session on the third bridge. So we respectfully ask that you reopen your discussions of a council consensus to build a third bridge at your next work session. We request this because two of your councilors were not even present at the meeting where you supposedly developed a consensus and because it was reached after you were told that bridge traffic was increasing and was projected increased to 80% or increased 80% by 2031. In fact, daily traffic, daily average traffic on the bridge is decreasing as this chart with data from ODOT traffic counting equipment shows. So we've got, we've got the graph that I just want to make available there. So right now, traffic counts are at a 10-year low and have decreased by 6% since 2006. You were only given data for 1991, 2000, and 2006, which would lead you to think that the bridge traffic is increasing when in fact it is decreasing. We believe this trend of people driving less is likely to continue for a lot of reasons, including rising gas prices, more compact development with business centers in West Salem, and more use of alternative modes of transportation. We were not allowed to hand out the one-page list of 11 issues that we think are really important to address. We were not allowed to hand them out there on the back of your flyer. And so far, your deliberations have only addressed two of those 11 items. So we request that you revisit the question of whether a third bridge is really needed in light of the significant long-term decline in bridge traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Bassett? Okay. Thank you. And on agenda item, let's see. Ted Campbell on, I'm afraid I can't read which item it is. Anyway, he will tell us. All right.
Number one is on these bike lanes. I understand they're important. I'm sorry. My name's Ted Campbell. I have 1058 34th Avenue Northwest in Salem, Oregon. And on these bike lanes, I understand they're important, but if you're going to put the damn things in and force the law. Policemen sit and watch people ride down the middle of the street, not using the bike lanes or on the side. If you go down here on Tuesday night, the Salem Bike Club rides down Commercial, Five Abreast in a lane. So if you're going to put these bike lanes in them, make them use them. The second thing is the neighborhood parks. I've lived in West Salem for a long time and the park on, excuse me Dan, it's Eola. Eola, the sign's fallen down once and had to been replaced. The grass is never cut. I can bring in a couple bags of stuff that I've gone down and picked up, including hypodermic needles, beer bottles, whiskey bottles, prothlactics, and I can give them to you. The kids use it as a place to hide. If you're not going to put a park in there, sell the property. I know you get the money when you get the building, or building permit fees to put those parks in. So I think you need to take responsibility for those parks. That sign's been there a good eight years, I think.
14.
14. So that that park has done nothing. I know they plan on doing something next year, but kids are hanging out there. Dan talked about health and things like that. This is where they're getting dirty needles, they're going, getting drunk, and then getting in their cars and driving around. So the responsibility falls on you guys. You have the money to fix these parks and put them up. So maybe the families need to look at the city council and then say, why is this happening? And my last one is you've talked about searching houses for documentation on this rainwater runoff. Well, you know, according to the Constitution, Amendment 4, the people have the right to be protected from unreasonable search and seizure and it may not be violated. This, and the person that swears out the search warrant has to swear an oath that can be taken to court and they can only search for certain things in certain places that are listed in there. So you might want to think about that before you get too far along on this. So that covers the three things I had to talk about.
All right. Thank you very much. Do councilors have any questions? Thank you very much for coming down to talk with us tonight. All right. All right. Was there anyone else who is here this evening wanting to give public comment? All right. If not, then we'll go right into the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I moved the consent calendar with following poll. 3.3A by Counselor Dickey. And Counselor Clausen would like to recuse himself on 3.3C.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of the Item 3.3A polled by Counselor Dickey and with the notation that Counselor Clausen is recusing himself on 3.3C. Are there any questions? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Well, now move to public hearings. Thank you. Oh, thank you. All right. We have several people who've signed up this evening for a public hearing on Item 4A. Continue. Okay. This... Right. Okay. This is the continuation on that item. And we have a staff report. And I see staff member Julie Warnicki is here. And maybe others as well.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Julie Warnicki. I'm with the Public Works Department. And I just wanted to give a very brief presentation to remind everybody where we are with this particular project. It's the public hearing on amendments to the Salem Transportation System Plan, bicycle and pedestrian elements in particular. It's been referred to as the Bike and Walk Salem Plan. So a quick history. Planning Commission considered this recommendation last winter and held their final public hearing on March 6th, making a recommendation to council to approve the amendments. Council First Ordinance Reading was in July. And since then, we've had, this is the third public hearing. Same public hearing continued. And the recommendation is to advance the Ordinance Bill to Second Reading with three changes. The first change there relates to the cross-campus path on Willamette University. That change is consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation. And this was presented to council on August 13th as part of the staff recommendation. The next two revisions there relate to changing some policy language pertaining to the use of skateboarding in the public right-of-way. Specifically, amending in the street system element, the multimodal street design policy to clarify that we're not talking just about bicycle and pedestrian transportation in our multimodal design, but also all modes of active transportation. And then adding a new policy in the bicycle system element encouraging the use of travel by active means of transportation, including skateboarding, in a manner that is safe and compatible with other roadway users. We have also included in the staff report as attachment to some preliminary code concepts that could... Staff's intention would be to take those concepts and go out into the community and do public involvement with both the skateboarders, the bicycle community, the general public, neighborhood associations, et cetera, and then come back to council with recommended code language pertaining to skateboards. But tonight's recommendation is only to make these two code... I'm, excuse me, policy amendments relating to skateboarding. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions now or later.
I'm sorry, but if you're signed up to testify, we'll be able to do that when you testify. We'll wait for questions until we've heard counsel, heard testimony from the public. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Warnicki. That's helpful. Okay, we're going to start in. I'll call a couple of names at a time so you can kind of prepare yourselves so we can move along as quickly as possible. Corey Poole and then William Paulus. And just so you all know, you state your name and address, and you have three minutes. And the lights indicate the end of two and the end of three. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, councilors. My name is Corey Poole. I'm the Chair of the Semper Neighbourhood Association. The Semper Neighbourhood Association actually has passed a motion to approve language similar to this. We didn't have the exact language until recently, but we'll bring that up when it comes. I'd like to start by acknowledging so many of the skaters who showed up this evening. Could I briefly have all the skateboarders in Salem who showed up this evening stand briefly so we can see how many came tonight? I'd like to say I'm very excited to be here tonight. If the proposed changes to the TSP are adopted tonight in Salem, Salem will join a select group of cities that have come to the conclusion that the future of transportation is multimodal. The data is clear that communities benefit greatly when people walk, bike, or roll rather than drive. Quality of life goes up, congestion and pollution goes down. Longboard skateboards differ from shortboard skateboards in several key ways. Where a shortboard is primarily designed for parks or stationary tricks, longboards are designed for traveling longer distances in a safe, controlled way. A longboard can steer or stop in a way comparable to a bicycle and can travel at similar speeds to a bicycle. A few people here tonight can actually travel at speeds on flat ground faster than a typical bicycle. Longboards have even been used to travel all the way around the world. The greatest attribute, however, of longboards is accessibility. A new complete longboard can be purchased for under $100. This puts longboards in reach of many lower-income individuals or families. Longboards do not require outside storage or locks. They fit in a locker, a coat closet, or under a bed. And I know of no better way to easily transition on and off public transportation other than walking. If the proposed language is accepted tonight, we in the longboard community look forward to working with city staff, neighborhood associations, and police to ensure that skateboarding in Salem is safe, legal, and accessible for everyone. And without, I'll take any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Poole? All right. Thank you very... Oh, sorry. Counselor Blasey?
Thank you. So I have a 19-year-old son who rides a longboard. And he is always telling me about the new longboards that are coming out with motorized. I think there's some technology that is allowing a little motor to be attached to longboards. And so I want to know if you could talk a little bit to that and what the implications might be for longboards being on the roads with that technology attached? How fast they'd be able to go? How quickly they'd be able to stop? Things like that.
Yeah. Electric skateboards and longboards have been out for a number of years. With no disrespect to their industry, it's typically been fairly gimmicky. Durability, cost, and other factors have made them unreachable to most longboarders. And frankly, from what I've seen, they don't offer that much of an advantage. Most of the people in this room can easily push a longboard at 10, 12 miles per hour for great distances. There's really not much need to weigh yourself down with a motor and worry about charging and shorting out the motors and everything else. I don't know if the language of any proposed ordinance would address specifically motorized longboards. I think it might be appropriate to address it. But that's really not what we're here tonight representing. We're representing human-powered travel and human-powered mobility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulus and then Nathan King.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's William F. Paulus. I'm an attorney located at 1207 Southwest 6th Avenue in Portland. I represent Elizabeth Walton Potter, who's a resident in Salem that lives in the Candelaria neighborhood at 2655 Sculpul Avenue South. On November 30th, we filed a written objection, which is in the record, I see, to including the Rural Avenue Hoyt Street Connector shared-use path into the TSP as proposed in the Bike and Walk Element Amendments. In a nutshell, the grounds for our objection are these. The city is not complying with Oregon Department of Land and Conservation and Development rules by including the connector into the TSP. The TSP is the final land use decision about the need, function, mode, and general location of proposed transportation facilities. The general location of the connector is known and will be part of the appealable land use decision. The connector could negatively impact Pioneer Cemetery, which is a city, which was, which the city designated as a Gold V historic resource on April 9th, 1990. Consequently, DLCD rules require the city to conduct a Gold V economic, social, environmental, and energy, or ESEE determination during the TSP approval process to examine the consequences that could result from its decision to allow, limit, or prohibit such a conflicting use of a Gold V resource. The city must make the necessary ESEE findings in the record if the connector is to be included in the TSP. It has failed to make such findings up to this point. Due to the sensitive nature of the Pioneer Cemetery, the record supports either an ESEE finding to prohibit the connector from passing through Pioneer Cemetery, or in the alternative, allow a limited pedestrian-only path, as recently described in Ordinance 1512, which vacated as a 12-foot-wide alley north of the cemetery and reserved a pedestrian easement over that area. That concludes my testimony. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has. Thank you.
Thank you. Do councilors have questions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Could you... I'm not sure I followed that last bit of thinking. What you're suggesting to us, then?
Well, I... What I'm suggesting is the council needs to do this ESEE finding, or determination and finding. And the current finding's lacking that. So that needs to be done.
Right.
And the record supports either eliminating the connector altogether from the Pioneer Cemetery. Not saying the connector can't happen, but it cannot happen through the Pioneer Cemetery based on if the city, through its ESEE analysis, determines that the importance of the Gold V resource, i.e. the cemetery, is such an importance that it greatly outweighs the benefit by the transportation benefit of the connector. Or... And I think the record supports that based on what's been presented. Or in the alternative, it could allow it, but in a limited manner. And I've just, I know that the city has recently done that or at least suggested it in Ordinance 1512, where it vacated the alley north of the cemetery. And it stated, you know, quote, I'm quoting from that ordinance, "Limited pedestrian access to and through the city-owned Pioneer Cemetery may be appropriate, but that access for bicycles and other modes of transportation is not appropriate due to the solemn character of the cemetery." Period. So, go ahead.
So what you're suggesting, then, is the language or at least the direction included in Ordinance 1512 would be included in the TSP? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. That's what we're suggesting to the city.
Okay.
Yes. And if the city doesn't do that, I think that there's going to be a potential problem about what's the policy of the city?
Right.
The TSP would be silent, add this, or particularly, or maybe possibly approving it. But then you have the ordinance which would conflict with that. So I think the city, just as a housekeeping matter, needs to resolve this. And I think putting it into the TSP would help solve that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming this evening. Nathan King and then Brandon.
Good evening, councilors, mayor.
Yes.
I'm a little nervous, sorry.
That's all right.
My name's Nathan King. I live on 486 24th Street in Ward 2. My speech is about 4A for the proposal. And I'll try to be brief because I know a lot of us will go over the same points over and over. But I'd like to go over the positive effects of skateboarding on a community, what it builds in our children, what it provides for our community. And I'd like to go over some of the arguments against skateboarding. First, I'll give a brief history about myself. I've been skateboarding for over a decade. I've been working since I was in second grade. And a lot of times, I couldn't afford to fix my car. And it was my only method of transportation to get to work. And because of the low maintenance cost, I was able to fix my skateboard before I could even fix my bike as an alternative mode. So that it's illegal downtown to skateboard has always been a hamper for me because I'm just trying to pay my bills. But I have to watch and go around downtown or be late to work just trying to get there, you know? But anyway, it's a good American sport. You know, you know that. It's good for your environment and body because it's not creating emissions like cars. And in children, it builds concentration, focus, persistence. It encourages their visualization and goal-setting. It builds social skills and self-esteem, just like any other sport. And it gives them a dedication to practice, as I'm sure a lot of these professional racers can attest. And what it provides for the community, because it always comes down to the bottom line, is troop transportation for workers. And I can attest to that, that it's a green alternative to cars. And people can't afford gas prices and rising insurance rates. This is an alternative for them. So we need to get on board with accommodating this along with bicycles. And the arguments against skateboarding, there's not a whole lot because it's such a positive way to commute. But a lot of people have concerns about the safety that you see skateboarders flying out of anywhere. And it's no less safe than bicycles would be, you know? Although there is a risk to hurting your knees or other limbs, a lot of that builds character for kids. And they need that, the risk in the sports, you know? It's good for their health. But my point is that it's, people have to get to work. And even in a car, it's dangerous, or a bicycle. But let's not exclude skateboards just because there's a stereotype that it's more dangerous. And vandalism. A lot of people associate skateboarders with vandalism or a negative subculture, if you will. But bicycles, pedestrians, or anybody who's capable of this vandalism or crime. And we shouldn't exclude boarding as a method of transportation in people to get to work or just for recreation just because of the negative connotations that people associate it with. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. Yes. Counselor Clem?
Nathan, thanks for coming down. Thanks for your testimony. Appreciate it very much. You ever had any close calls with cars or bikes?
I've actually been hit by cars quite a few times. I would like to make a point, if you will.
I'm glad you're okay.
When I'm driving in my car, I'm very alert and a very defensive driver, but not nearly as much as when I'm on a board. I'm looking behind me in both ways. And I look both ways twice when I'm on my board. Whereas I'm driving, I might only look once both ways. So skateboarders, they're very attentive because that's their life. There's one-ton cars going around them constantly. And they're very safe because they know that, you know, it's very dangerous to be a boarder. And, well, that's my point. Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I did. Just one more. When you're on the longboard and you're going down the street, what part does the, was, does the truck driver or the car driver see? What, how do I see you out of the quorum II or coming down the road? Do I see any part of the skateboard? Is it just a human being who's...
It's just about as visible as a pedestrian or a bicycle would be. I could see how your concern would be because a lot of them, they push them, and they're really low to the ground. But, like, Portland has laws that adopt reflectors and lights. And I think we could get on board with that, too, and have more safety laws for the bicyclers at night. board with that, too, and have more safety laws for the bicyclers at nighttime or when there's visibility issues.
Well, with a bike, I can see reflectors, I can see bike. With a person standing on a board, wow, I, I see it. Maybe, I'll see the person, particularly when the weather's like, in time of day like it is now. So I'm glad you weren't hurt, seriously.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Dickey.
Thanks. Yeah, just to kind of follow up with those questions. So do you typically ride on the sidewalk, on the street, in the bike lane? Where?
Whatever's safest. You know, like, my friend, Liberty Road, there's no bike lane, so we go on the sidewalk. Or downtown, it's illegal to skateboard downtown, but people still have to get to work. If something's illegal, that doesn't mean they're going to follow the law if they have to commute. So if I'm trying to get through downtown, I'll go through an alleyway, or whatever's safest, whatever has the least traffic, you know, is usually what I'll stick to. But there's times when I have to merge into traffic, just like a bicyclist would, or a pedestrian even, but we just use proper hand signals, and I always yield to cars, even though vehicles should yield to pedestrians. I always yield, just to be safe and to protect lives.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Brandon Dejarles, am I saying your name correctly? If not, please correct me. And then Richard Cleve and Larry Miles after him.
Hey, Brandon Dejarle here. 1463 First Street. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's, you know, great to speak a case that's really personal to me. I would just like to get into the personal side of it a little bit. Growing up, all through middle school, elementary school, I participated in pretty much every sport, soccer, basketball, baseball. My eighth-grade year, I started skateboarding, and it's been my passion ever since. Just the friends I've made and the community I've been in, there's just such a strong sense of family with, between all, all the longboarders, and there's just such a strong sense of morals, unlike any of my other friends. My skateboarder buddies are always the people I can go to to, you know, whenever I need anything. Uh, man. Um, I don't know. Are there any questions, really quick? So I can get my mind.
Are there any questions? All right.
Well, just a second.
Yes, uh-huh. It's okay. Take a deep breath.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty nervous. It's cool, it's cool.
You're doing good.
This is just something that I've seen throughout many of the kids. The skateboarding industry is growing quite a bit. I know there's been over half a million longboarders purchased annually at this point in time, and that's in the USA alone. It's definitely been a growing form of transportation, and since I started skateboarding back four years ago, I have seen it probably five times. There's been so many more kids getting into it, plenty of middle schoolers, high schoolers, and the way I was brought up with it, and the way the community, the longboard community really is being brought up, unlike more of the skateboarding, skateboarding community, it's, it's based on strong morals and safety. When I was starting off, everybody wore helmets. Everybody, that was just, I would never ride without a helmet, ever. If I was going to school, if I was going anywhere, if I was just going out inside in front of my house, always wear a helmet. I think that's really carried over. There's so many kids nowadays that ride with helmets as far as longboarders. Skateboarders, on the other hand, they're, it's more of a stationary thing, they're, I don't know, just, it's a little different. Definitely the longboarding community, though, has been, I think it's really pushing some of the youth today in a positive direction. There's, there's kids like Conan Myers over there, he's a pretty cool kid, he's, I think, a freshman now. He started skating, I believe, a year ago, and ever since then, it's been his passion. He's just been growing. He's really grown up ever since then. He's, it's really just brought a lot of, a lot of, a lot of character.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Once you got going there, you were really on a roll, not to make a pun, but thank you for coming down this evening. Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. Richard Cleve and then Larry Miles.
My name is Richard Cleve, 1032 Howard Street. I've been skateboarding for 17 years. I have found throughout my many years of skateboarding, that it's been a very popular in Salem, and recently, there's been an increase of young people who use skateboarding as a mode of transportation. In my opinion, Salem laws pertaining to skateboarding are inadequate, and we could learn a lot from what Portland is doing regarding their fair use of transportation laws. Some things Portland is doing is allowing skateboarders to the same rights as bicyclists. Also, like Salem, Portland bans skateboarding in the downtown area, however, the difference being Portland offers safe skateboarding routes for people who choose to skateboard through the downtown area. In Portland, skateboarders and longboarders are grouped into the same categories of laws pertaining to bicyclists. They're required to have visible lighting equipment, just as bicyclists, and have to be riding in bicycle lanes if one is available. In closing, I think Salem could be doing a lot better in addressing the laws pertaining to the safety of longboarders and skateboarders who share the streets with cars. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. Other questions? Counselor Clem.
Yeah, Richard, thank you for your observations, particularly about Portland's safe skateboard routes. I guess that's both longboard and shortboard. Downtown Salem has Commercial Street, which is charroded. It's designated to be safe for bikes and cars. Is right through the middle of downtown Salem on Commercial, safe enough to be shared by bikes and trucks and cars and skateboards?
I, I think it is.
Right through downtown?
Yeah, well, as long as you're like, as far to the right, and you're doing the same thing that bicycles are doing.
Well, they're driving right through the middle of downtown now, in charrow lanes, so.
Well, I, I think the law, I'm not too sure about the law, but I think that you, on a bike or a skateboard in Portland, you have to be in the bike lane if there is one available, and you also have to be as far to the right of the road as you can possibly get to be safe, too. So I don't, that's what I know about it.
Thank you.
Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Richard. So I own a couple of longboards, and I really enjoy it, and I live at the bottom of a great longboarding hill on Holder Lane Southeast, so it's a good residential street. But my question is, I have never braved a road with my skateboard, and, you know, when I get going fast, my only way to really slow down is wide, sweeping curves.
Yeah.
What if you're going down Commercial Street in the bike lane? How do you slow down if you're really going, getting going fast on the way north towards downtown on Commercial by doing that to something?
Well, my suggestion would be that people that are going to bomb a hill, learn how to foot brake, which is a way that longboarders have been using to break their skateboards, I mean, to slow down their skateboards. Basically, you're just putting your foot down, and you're like, dragging it in, and it's a good thing to learn if you're going to be bombing hills like that, because safety is always an issue. I mean, I've heard stories of people that have actually gotten speeding tickets on some of the Salem hills, too. But before you, before you go bombing a hill, you should learn how to like, stop, and you should also think that, yeah, you could hit a rock easily and like, go flying, and know how to do your danger roll, basically.
So you think, as long as a skateboarder knows what they're doing, they could, they could navigate Commercial Street on a big hill and?
Definitely.
Keep it safe?
Yeah.
All right.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Larry Miles. I'm president of Salem Bike Club. I'm the ride coordinator for the Monster Cookie Ride, and I also co-lead a proponents group for the Willamette Valley Scenic Bike Way. You know, cycling has become extremely popular, and cyclists from all over the world and the United States come to the Willamette Valley to cycle here. This is, I guess, this would be Cycling Mecca. You know, it means increased tourist dollars for Salem. Our club has two major event rides. We have the Monster Cookie Ride, we have the Peach of the Century Ride. We draw in from Oregon and the Northwest 2,700 riders for those events, and every one of them is out spending money on restaurants and hotels. So translated, I don't know what the number is, but, you know, it's, it's big bucks. A good bicycling infrastructure will provide it, needed security for all cyclists in the future. And by the way, to the gentleman over there, the Salem Bike Club does not have a Tuesday night ride. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions of councilors? Counselor Tesler.
I'd just like to ask you, I think they're talking about critical mass. Is that correct? Do you know about critical mass? Can you speak to critical mass? Okay, why don't you tell what critical mass is, so that people understand what critical mass is and what they're trying to achieve?
Well, they're trying to achieve kids on bikes, is what they're trying to achieve, and that is the primary focus of, of critical mass.
Okay, and also, wouldn't you agree that when you see the people riding in a group like that, that basically, it's probably more safe for them to be riding in a big group like that, when they're on the rides together, and they're all riding together with lights?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. And doesn't that inspire, would you agree that that would maybe inspire somebody who isn't real confident riding a bike, that they're riding with some other people, and they feel safer riding with people?
For sure.
That way?
Yeah, yeah, and our Sunday afternoon rides, we have a, a ride that is organized by, well, basically by a veteran of the club, and he rides behind everybody and assists people along that, along that route, just to ensure their safety, bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by councilors? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your coming down this evening. All right. Ted Campbell, did I miss Larry, Craig Myers? I'm sorry, Craig Myers, please, you're next, and then Ted Campbell.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My son, Conan Myers, began longboarding about one year ago. It has been very, very good for him in terms of gaining maturity, finding a sport that he can participate in whenever he wants to, as opposed to being limited by the enrollment of team sports. The ability to be in a situation where he sets the level of competition that he decides to participate in as well, makes it so that he has access to a sport that he progresses in at a pace that is comfortable for him, that is a sport of his choice mainly, and also, one that is very, very healthy and teaches him responsibility in terms of maintaining his own safety, maintaining the safety of others, and maintaining that moral compass that he needs. When he is skating in the community, he needs to police himself, and he does a very good job of that. We've done a lot to educate him about how if anybody speaks out against him skating in their neighborhood, he is to listen, and he is to make a quick decision as to whether he needs to basically stop bothering that person in their neighborhood and move on, or he needs to exercise his right to be in that neighborhood, because the request being made of him is irrational. In most cases, he would decide to move on. Brandon Dejarle has been an excellent mentor to him. That mentorship relationship has also been one of the distinct advantages that we've seen with Conan, in being able to exercise in a sport of his choice as an individual without the requirements of participating under the, the current team structures. Kids in our neighborhoods who do not have a place to go, who do not have an outlet in the current structure, they do have the opportunity with longboarding to make that decision for themselves. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Myers?
No. Any questions?
All right. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate that. Mr. Campbell and then Phil Priestley.
Again, my name's Ted Campbell. I'm in West Salem. I have nothing against skateboards and that, my grandkids and my great-grandkids, I put money in buying them, but I still think that the money that you have allocated for the parks should come first before this. I mean, you could put skateboard facilities in the parks, but I know Chuck Bennett last year was griping that all the playground equipment in his parks were broken, and this one over here had 14 years, it's been sitting with nothing, and I know you get money from the building permits and from taxes, so maybe people are getting tired of even shuffling money around and that. Let's use it for what it's, what you collected it for and do it. The kids in Chuck's area probably likes the playground. We can put skateboard facilities like you have downtown in these parks, and they can use those there. Also, if you want them to use the bike lanes, eventually, the bicyclists are going to write about the skateboarders being in there, and you're going to have to add another lane. Maybe you should start charging them like, a fee like they do for automobiles, maybe a dollar a skateboard and $10 for bicycle over age 18. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Mr. Campbell? All right, thank you. Phil Priestley and then Abel Cardenas.
Hi, my name is Phil Priestley. I live at 3827 Shanico Way. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I've, I've been employed in the downtown since the mid-'80s, and I've seen the traffic and parking situations grow to what it is now. I'm employed at a law firm downtown as a probate and estate planning paralegal, and most days, I can skateboard from our office over to the courthouse and file the pleadings quicker than I could ever hope to drive over there and park, especially when I have to circle the courthouse four or five times. And I can skate from our office over to the assessor's office, record a deed, get back to the office. Mind you, this is all in my shirt and tie and dress shoes, so. I think the key to adding skating to the mix in the downtown traffic is to model it after Portland City Ordinance 2012-205, which is, it's been touched on, makes it legal to skate, you know, and it, it gives skaters all of the rights and responsibilities that a bicyclist has, you know, including speed limits and following traffic control signals. You know, it, adding skateboarding to the downtown traffic mix, or the traffic mix in general, you know, it's not going to solve any traffic issues or parking issues, but, you know, it's certainly not going to add to them, it's going to take something away from the congestion that we have downtown. You know, and as Mr. Poole touched on, it's, there's no bike racks needed, there's no bike lockers, there's, you know, little to no cost to the city to imposing this. So, you know, I really see no disadvantage to the city and its residents in making this transportation choice available to people that choose it, and, you know, I personally can only see advantages. Any questions?
Questions by councilors? Counselor Blasey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil, I think it was Brandon that mentioned briefly, he made reference to the use of helmets and?
Right.
And other options. And I know this, this is a little outside of the realm of this discussion, but as we are trying to make a decision, I, I know me personally, you know, one of the concerns I have is definitely safety, and, you know, he, he mentioned helmets and things like that. You know, I, again, I have a son that rides a longboard, and I see longboarders everywhere now, but what I don't see is a lot of helmets, and that concerns me, and if we're looking to encourage and facilitate more and more longboard, longboard riding, what, what would, what would our options be to, to help keep folks safer? what would our options be to, to help keep folks safer, as far as, you know, something that would require, you know, I don't even know if helmets are actually legally required. I know for bikes, you know, children under a certain age have to wear a helmet, so can you tell us a little bit about what, what we could do to, to make this safer?
Well, I know Portland does require helmets for riders under, what is it, under the age of 16? 16. And they also have requirements that if you're riding at night, you've got white light to the front, red light to the rear, just like a bicyclist would. I personally never skate without a helmet on, 'cause, you know, I'm the clumsiest person around, so I'm gonna be the one to fall and hit my head. You know, I don't know that making mandatory helmets part of it would be a bad thing, you know, I'm sure it'd meet with some objection, but, you know, it, it wouldn't be bad.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Abel Cardenas, am I saying your name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, and then after him, Kenji Sukahara.
Hello, my name's Abel Cardenas, I live in 305 Southview Place, out south Salem. I've been skateboarding for about nine years now, and I, I just love it, it's, it's been a big part of my life. I've, I used to do a lot of sports when I was in elementary school, and I just never really got the right feel for it, and then I got it started into skateboarding, and I've just been hooked on it ever since. I just love the feeling of it, just standing on a piece of wood, going down the road, just barely even using enough energy to just keep going. It's, it's been like a big part of my life, I've, I do competition, long distance, it's, it's really good endurance for me, and I use it, I, I like to do it more than running, more than walking, I, I can't see myself without my skateboard, and I just, every time I do skateboard, I always wear my helmets, wear my pads, wear everything I can to just stay safe, and I respect all cars, respect bikers, I usually let cars go before I go 'cause I don't want them just like pushing me off the road, 'cause I've been, I've had cars just try to throw me off the road, that, that don't want me there, I just, I don't know, I've, I've just been trying to be as respectful as I can, and I do that to the community, I, I try and help the community as much as I can with skateboarding. I've set up events myself where I talked to the city and got permission to hold an event, and I do a lot of charity events for the homeless. I, I set up where a lot of kids come, even their parents come, they bring canned food donations, and I donate them all to the local homeless shelter, and all of them really love it, they, they just want me to keep doing that, 'cause it's, it's, it's good for, it's good for us, and it's good for them, I just like to get the whole community together, and just to be a part of something, and I just, I love it, I don't think I'm ever gonna stop skateboarding, like, it's, it's just one of my passions, and I think I'm gonna be doing it for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Yes, both Councilor Tesler and then Councilor Nanki.
First of all, thanks for coming down here, it's good to see somebody who's young here, so, thank you for that. You know, I, you know, always wore helmets and pads when I skated, of course, I had a vision old ghost, and I was back in the day when Tony Hawk was big, so that was a while ago, I'm not gonna say how long ago that was. But anyway, I, my concerns are that, you know, I'm trying to think about how you would do lighting on a skateboard. I mean, you're pushing a skateboard, I'm goofy-footed, so I'm trying to think about where I'm gonna put lights on yourself when you're skateboarding. I mean, you're not gonna put it on your skateboard physically, because you can't see them, 'cause they're too close to the ground, so I wondered if you could kinda tell me how you would arrange lights on yourself to make yourself more visible?
Well, when skateboarders ride in the night, I usually wear a backpack, carry some stuff maybe, like, I, we have gloves to like protect our hands when we fall, and I would just, I usually just wear the backpack, and I'd, I'd put a light, a red light on the backpack, and then I'd put a, a white light on my helmet, 'cause everywhere I'm looking, I'm showing the light, so if I see a car, I shine the light at him. I usually wave my hands just to make sure that they, that they see me there, 'cause I don't really wanna get hit, I've been hit, just, I've been hit in parking lots just 'cause people aren't paying attention. I, I just try to be as safe as possible.
Okay, Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kinda goes along with the turning a bit. Do people use both legs, or you just have one really strong leg?
Well, I, I use both legs personally, when one leg gets tired, I use the other, but it's, it's really different towards a lot of people, because some people can't do it, so they don't, they don't really wanna do it, 'cause it just, it feels awkward, it feels like you're just starting all over again. So, I, I've learned to use both feet, I, I've never really had control with my other foot, until I just kept doing it for a long time, and it just feels really natural to me.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilor Clem.
Yes, Abel, good testimony, thank you. The, being hit, was that daytime or nighttime? What was, was it parking lot?
It was daytime.
It was parking lot?
Yeah, Fred Myers.
Okay, and they just backed into you, or?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was a really old person, a lot of, like, old people, like, no offense, but I've, like, I feel like their reaction time is a lot slower.
Yeah.
So, if they see something, they don't realize it at first. So, I, I, I'm pretty sure she saw me, but she kept going. Like, I, I was just like, whoa, whoa, boom, I just got knocked off, and I don't really wanna like, I'm not trying to like cause any problems or anything, so I just went on my way, I, I wasn't hurt, so I wasn't, I wasn't trying to cause any problems.
Were you moving faster than somebody walking? Were you skating?
Well, when I go in a parking lot, I don't really wanna go really fast.
Yeah.
Because
Right.
there's dangers to it, I don't really know what's gonna happen. I usually just, just cruise, go maybe like five miles an hour, someone speedwalking, or just regular walking. It's just, it's just, I don't, it's just like, I just like it better than walking, because I don't have to take so much steps, I just take one step and it just gets me rolling.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming and testifying tonight.
All right, I'm back.
Yes, you are.
Again, my name is Kenji Sukahara, 1730 Misty Place Northwest, and that's in West Salem, and Madam Mayor and members of council, this is one area I can really speak about, and one is the economic impact that was talked about earlier with cycling. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Executive Director of the Oregon Bicycle Racing Association, we're a 5,000-member organization, our gross is close to three-quarters of a million dollars, and our economic impact in the state of Oregon approaches probably three million, three million dollars or more. The, the, so there, there is a huge economic benefit to, to cycling, so that's why I want to speak in favor of the TSP. But I wanted to go back real quick to the skateboarding. Until I met Cory, I had no idea what a skateboarder looked like, I, I thought like Tony Hawk, the hair all over the place, but now I find out there's attorneys out there who skateboard, they run the, they run the, the whole range of people that you can meet, and they seem like a really responsible bunch. And when it comes to safety, one thing that I wanna relate to you is, seeing a longboarder, I sort of look at them in profile, they're sort of like a person on a BMX bike, they're sort of low to the ground, and you see BMX bikes being included as part of the TSP. So I think that it would be really appropriate to, to bring in folks on skateboarding in, and as a cyclist myself, I, I wouldn't have a problem with skateboarders, I can move around them, they can move around me, although I don't think you can beat me since I'm, I'm a racer.
That guy.
That guy. So, I, I strongly urge council to really consider and think about it, there, there are always safety issues, no matter what form of transportation you're using. I've been hit twice riding my bike, I know numerous pedestrians that have been hit while walking across crosswalks, so it's really incumbent on both drivers and people who are using alternative modes of transportation to really pay attention. So it's all on us, and I think that's why we should include them as part of the TSP, because they're responsible citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Councilor Dickey, and then Councilor Clem.
Great, yeah, thanks for coming down and speaking, you kinda answered part of my question I was gonna ask you, since we've heard from some skateboarders, you know, have, if they've been hit or had close calls, and you mentioned you've been hit, do you have close calls with cars? 'Cause I know you ride your bike a lot, and is it, I mean, really, can you speak to like what you do to be proactive, and how much you have to do to be, to keep yourself from getting hit more than just twice?
Sure, well, as Councilor Clem and many of you have already spoken about, or many people have talked about is especially lighting. My wife is seven months pregnant, and she actually commutes by bike up Glen Creek. If you see somebody going really, really slow up that, that's her. And that's a matter of putting a lot of lights on yourself, and being very visible, especially at night, then that, that, that's gonna apply to you, you guys too. So, that's really important. For me, what I do is I'm hyper-aware of my surroundings, so I'm, I'm always checking what's going on, and I, I, I always try to anticipate, oh, that person's gonna cut right in front of me, or that person's gonna cut right in front of me. It happens. Some people, some, a lot of ti, well, most of the time, it's inadvertent. You occasionally run across the person who's not really nice and will do something on purpose, but the, the main thing is just pay attention. And that, that's gonna be true whether you're a driver, or you're a cyclist, or a skateboarder, so, that's the top thing.
All right, other questions? Other councilors? Oh, Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Kenji, for your, your thoughts. You made an analogy between a BMX bike and a longboard.
Yes.
I'm having problems with that. They're low to the ground, to be sure, but there's reflectors on bikes, I, I can see them when I'm driving my car. Obviously, my concern is whether, not that the bunch riding longboards aren't responsible or wearing reflective gear, I'm sure they will, they'll learn from being hit maybe, if they don't know already, but I'm worried about the other 99% out there that don't know to look for people on streets on longboards, so how do, it, it's one thing to educate 1% to wear reflective gear and think about what might people do driving their car, it's a whole other thing to, how do you educate the other 99% to look out for people on skateboards?
It, it, it comes down to really having a critical mass of people, the more people that are out there, whether they be cyclists or people on longboards, the more that you see them, the, the more that you realize that they're part of the transportation, or they might be commuting, or whatever, so you start taking more, you start paying more attention. A lot of people tend to get tunnel vision while they're driving, and if you expose them to different modes of transportation, like, for example, a lot of people up in Portland are so used to cyclists that, that they pay attention, they look in their side view mirror, they look in their rearview mirror, they know if somebody's coming down, so the incidence rate for the number of cyclists is, is really start to increase with the awareness. And I think including these folks and encouraging this, especially since it's a healthy opportunity for kids to really get involved and stay active, the more kids that'll, that'll get it, get into it, so, that, that's what I say. And going back to BMX, also, they're usually a single speed, so you, they don't have gears, so they, they tend not to go super fast, they go super fast for around 45 seconds, and then they slow down. So, that, that, that's how BMX works, so if you see them out on the, the road, they're usually going pretty slow.
All right, Councilor Tesler, did you have a question?
I just wanted to thank Kenji and the, I forgot to thank the gentleman in the blue striped shirt too, for being such great advocates, and just always providing reliable and good information about biking, and just really standing up for the biking community, your service was really appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and, and one more thing, for that gentleman who's talking about Eola Park, the master plan is going to be presented, and as far as I remember, Eola is part of the master plan. Right, Councilor Dickey? Oh, yeah. Excellent, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we have Rachel Hintemeyer and Jonathan Myers.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hintemeyer, and I'm located at 2375 Adams Street Southeast, and I have been longboarding for about two years now, and ever since I started skating, it's just kinda built a really good structure in my life. I, and my only income, so I can't really afford a car, and I, you know, I've never found something to do that is good exercise, gets you the place where you need to be, and is affordable, so that's all I really have to say.
Well, thank you for coming down. Are there questions? Councilor Dickey.
Thanks for coming down and speaking about this, it's nice to have a girl talk about this, so that's exciting. So, I just, I wanna clarify, 'cause there, there have been, was a comment made about building places for skaters to actually skate, but you actually use your skateboard to get to where you're going, like, to get to work, is that
Yep.
what you were saying? Okay.
Yeah, I do, and I wear protection too, so.
I'm sorry?
Like helmet?
Yes, uh-huh. Oh, protect, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, any other questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Myers, and then Susan Arbor.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Myers, I live at 1575 Cottage Street. I've been skating for about four years, and I use it as my mode of transportation to get to school, I skate to Chembeketa. My primary concern on the master bike plan is that skateboards are incorporated because the skate park is downtown, and that is where the, the amendments will be made from this plan. Are there any questions?
Are there questions? Councilor Tesler.
Okay, let me get this right, you live on Cottage Street, south, south, right, in Ward Two, my word, and you skate to Chembeketa from there?
Yes.
On Lancaster?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Every day?
Uh, no, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that's going.
That's every day. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, other questions for him? All right, Mr. Myers, thanks for coming down, and Susan Arbor, and then Bonnie Hesch.
Hi, I'm Susan Arbor, and I live at 450 Rural Avenue South, and I wanted to say that I support the amendments for the Salem Transportation Bicycle Pedestrian Amendments to the plan. As a person who also does not own a car, but I am a bicyclist and a bus rider and a pedestrian, I wanna say that I support all multimodal transportation, human-powered travel. I think that the key to keeping everyone safe is, is good safety laws and education, and I recently read a really excellent article in Public Health Affairs Journal, and it compared the fatalities and injuries in Germany and Holland compared to the United States, and they had some really good things in the conclusions of what we could do, and some of them weren't even, you know, horribly expensive, but one of the main things was education, so motorists, you know, have to know the rights and responsibilities, and so do skateboarders, bicyclists. And one of the things that they do, and pedestrians too, one, one of the things that they said in this article that was so interesting was that even the children are trained to walk defensively as pedestrians, so by the time a child is 10 years old, they know how to walk defensively, and so, and also the other really interesting thing about this article that's different in Europe than here is that in Europe, a lot of elderly people are, are actually bicycle riders. And, and so I think that that's a really important, so I, and then I just wanted to shift over to the connector, potential connector between Rural and Hoyt Street, between the cemetery, I just wanna say that I'm in favor of this connectivity, I think it's, the logical, very logical place to put it is in the, between the two cemeteries, and it's, it's, it's basically already there, you just need to build one gate and open another gate, and I just wanna support that connectivity. Are there any questions?
All right, are there questions?
Oh, and by the way, this, this vest is very inexpensive, I bought it recently, and as a pedestrian, I feel like it's, and a skateboarder could easily wear this, and then these lights you can buy, they're very, you know, they're very safe, you can get them in white, and I'm not gonna turn on the blinkings, I don't wanna hurt your eyes, but it blinks in two different ways, and, and you can attach it anywhere on your body.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, our last speaker who has signed up is Bonnie Hesch, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Hesch.
My name is Bonnie Heich and I live at 594 Rural Avenue South. And I would like to encourage you to support the plan as it's been drafted with multimodal focus. I also wanted to talk to the connector which Mr. Paulus talked to with respect to what occurred in the recent vacation proceeding that you all were part of. That vacation proceeding reserved a pedestrian easement. I believe that the plan shows a bicycle pedestrian connection. It might be appropriate to amend the plan to just show the pedestrian connection. And it is an oversight that, I'm not sure anybody put it all together that the Gold Five resource is, or Pioneer Cemetery is a Gold Five resource. And it might be appropriate to carry over the findings from the vacation proceeding into this proceeding dealing with the balancing that occurred when you made that decision a few months ago. Thank you.
Are there questions? Councilor Clem?
Yeah, Bonnie, thanks for your comment. I'm trying to get to the point that the addition of the bicycle connection as presented in the staff recommendation for the TSP causes some problem in terms of the Gold Five, the ability to use that as a Gold Five resource. What's the nexus there between, you're recommending that we take out bike for that connection and that gives rise to interfering with the cemetery's Gold Five findings. So why is walking okay, but walking and biking isn't?
Well, there haven't been many Gold Five findings made and the council could make a Gold Five finding balance in favor of bicycle and pedestrian. That would be perfectly within your purview if, after doing a little analysis and you could come up with those findings. It's just that with the vacation proceeding, you reserved only a pedestrian easement. So at this point and at that time, I believe it was Councilman Bennett who indicated that a pedestrian connection was probably more appropriate for that location, that perhaps a bicycle connection might pose some conflicts. And based on that, what I heard at that proceeding, it may be appropriate to also carry that thought process forward into this proceeding as well, limiting that connection to pedestrian access and satisfying your Gold Five obligations in that manner. There's no, there's no other way to reach the cemetery except through that pedestrian easement. And so it almost renders the bicycle component moot unless there's a lot of money that could purchase a house and put in, and acquire additional property for that.
Are there other questions? All right. Thank you very much for coming down. Was there anyone else in the chambers this evening that wanted to speak who wasn't able to get onto the list? Yes, please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and say it slowly and I'll write it down.
Alex Phillips. I live at 1311 Chemeckata Street Northeast. Small cities all over the country are realizing that transportation is about people, not about people in cars, but about people using all sorts of modes to get around. And I'm so glad that Salem is going to be joining, hopefully joining that growing large number of cities that are realizing this. Safety's been talked about quite a bit tonight. I used to have a much better attitude about motorists. I'm a motorist and a biker and a walker, but in, since moving to Salem, I can't share some of the positive attitudes. I, every single day, I see motorists cutting off cyclists, looking right at us, cutting us off, causing dangerous situations. And I urge, I beg the police to start ticketing them, please. And I also urge you, the city council, to pass this plan because it will help get and fund the plan too, so there'll be more cyclists on the road. And so cyclists and motorists will understand how to work on the roads together. After one week of getting cut off several times, almost getting, with somebody looking straight at me, he was turning right, I was going straight, he would not brake for me. Numerous incidents like that. There was someone who actually, I was going down 12th, he was waiting, he actually waited for me to pass him before I turned into the driveway. And I turned around, I had to thank him. And what he said was, well, I know what it's like. I ride my bike with my daughter all the time and I think that's a very important thing. If you do all these different modes, you see it that way. So please pass this plan tonight and please fund the plan so we can have a city that is for everyone, not just for the people that can get out and bike, but for those concerned but interested to get us all biking and walking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Phillips? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll now ask staff to come back up and see if councilors have any questions or if there's anything further that she wanted to impart to us tonight. Welcome. Questions by councilors. Councilor Bennett and then Councilor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Warnke, I want to follow up on several pieces of testimony. We heard Mr. Paulus, Ms. Heisch, on this question about the interaction between the plan and our ordinance 1512 on the vacation of the alley. That sort of ongoing issue that we have. I thought that the, I'm trying to understand the suggestion, what that would sound like to resolve this issue kind of once and for all, leaving open the possibility of a pedestrian walkway across the cemetery without kind of jamming the whole thing up with extraneous discussion in this plan. And I'm not clear where this stands in this plan, whether it's in a map. I have this impression, I've seen it on a map or I've seen it discussed in the plan. And then I've heard other discussions of alternative bike routes that deal with the issue of bicycling between these two, between those two neighborhoods. How do we resolve this thing kind of once and for all in this plan? We have an ordinance that resolves it with the vacation in terms of, as Ms. Heich said, it kind of moots the question of bicycle use, but how do we clean this thing up now?
Well, right now, what was in the ordinance bill, the first ordinance, first reading of the ordinance bill that is the subject of tonight's public hearing included a multi-use path connecting Rural and Hoyt somewhere, subject to a future refinement study. And that's shown in a map with basically arrows that just point to the names of Rural and Hoyt Streets and then some discussion. That is currently included in both the bicycle and pedestrian elements. Council could, to be consistent with the action on the vacation, council could request or give direction that the, a path connection only be shown in the pedestrian element and that it be specifically called out as being a future pedestrian path, subject to additional refinement in terms of location and design and how to make it work and just remove it from the bicycle element. That would be my comment.
The other, the other way to look at it, this, Councilor Bennett, is that in the plan, it says that this is an area for future study. In order to actually construct it, you'd have to go and do an amendment to the transportation system plan when that location was actually identified. And if that location did go through the cemetery at that time, that would be the time in which you do the analysis that was spoken of earlier.
The Gold Five.
The Gold Five analysis. Because right now, it just simply says, study a future connection there and it's a very large area.
Well, what if we're just silent on this issue? Just rather than saying pedestrian or bicycle or, it really does become part of a future discussion when it's time or how does it, do we need to designate it to make it happen?
You would, it is in the transportation system plan for further study. And so that's policy direction to staff over time, at some future time, to come back with some recommendation to the council about a location. But that time could be 20 years in the future.
Here's the problem I've got and you can make, if that's okay, Madam Mayor. The section of right of, I've been reading from the ordinance, the section of right of way proposed for vacation is not part of or near a planned transportation improvement and seems to indicate that it really isn't part of a transportation plan. Am I misunderstanding that language? Am I reading that all wrong?
Currently, you know, the, this, in the current plan, I believe it's correct, Julie, that there is not a connection that is in the plan. So currently, there is no connection in the transportation system plan. And so what this would do is this would add as a study area, that entire area from Commercial Street all the way to the, to the end of the, that very large area that includes both cemeteries. And that location could be anywhere. That connection could actually be along Commercial, depending upon, you know, a future council action.
Well, it does seem to be fairly clear that what we've been talking about is a fairly limited pedestrian access point. Somehow does, will the, will the planners then be guided by ordinance 15-12, which talks about limited access, limited?
That would be one, one aspect of the recommendation they would bring back to you, because that would be an available pedestrian access point to the cemetery. That doesn't mean that that's where the location of the connection would be.
Yeah.
Again, the, what the transportation system plan is, it's a policy document and it says, we think, you know, the council believes that there should be a connection between here, but it doesn't identify where that connection is. And so staff, when it comes back to make a recommendation to council, will look at the whole picture. Safety, availability of connections, of, you know, the, if there are any hurdles such as, you know, property acquisition, the Gold Five issue. So you would look at all of those aspects and ultimately coming back to a recommendation to the council on where to amend the transportation system plan to locate the connector and then to go through the necessary steps to build it. And if it was located within the cemetery, because that's a historic resource, it would have to go through historic design review. So there would be several steps that you'd have to go through.
Just one more. I apologize.
Sorry.
This hard, this hard for me to kind of understand then. I'm thinking back on Mr. Paulus's suggestion of somehow incorporating this into this planning document with that, the language around this that we, that sort of describes what we had in mind in the alley.
If you wanted to designate the cemetery as the location for the pedestrian connection, then I would say he is correct. You'd have to go through and do the Gold Five analysis.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that in order to, if you're going to go, the ultimate location of that, that connection, if there is ever one built, would have to, would require an amendment to the transportation system plan to identify where that location is. And what I'm saying is that those decisions would be part of that decision of amending the transportation system plan.
So the little blue line and the arrows and stuff on the map are just blue lines and arrows?
It's just policy direction to staff to look within this large area for a potential connection.
Well, what if we got rid of the blue line and arrows? Just clean that map, just erase this stuff that creates this impression that we are designating it and leaves it an open question and allows those who are interested in this to go through their own process of developing, coming to us, the cemetery folks, the property owners, the neighbors, all the rest of Parks people. But right now, it seems, because of the way the map is drawn with arrows and blue, you know, markings, it seems to have designated that area, which I think is part of why we've had such a, kind of a fitful discussion about this whole thing for so long.
Well, certainly if you took it out, it would not preclude adding it back in the future.
No, no, I'm not saying we're precluding. I'm just saying, right now, that map seems to say, as a policy guidance to staff, when you look at that map and you look at the question of linking those two neighborhoods, that seems to say, look here. It seems to call this, this point of real estate out. Could we clean that up so that it doesn't call it out or am I misreading the pictures I'm looking at?
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking, Councilor Bennett. If you, if you look at the...
I want it to be a lot, I want it to be as vague as you described.
It's pretty vague.
Okay.
It says Rural-Hoyt Connection, Further Study Needed.
So I'm just pulling up here what it shows. So right now, it has arrows that point to the names of the streets, not to any specific property location. And then as Mr. Tosh says, it says Further Study Needed. And then when you scroll down to the bottom of this page, it says Location and Design to be Determined Through Future Study.
So if you wanted to make it as vague as possible...
Get rid of the arrows.
Get rid of the box at the bottom of the page.
The box at the bottom of the page?
If you get rid of the box at the bottom of the page, it's as vague as you can get.
Yeah. The box at the bottom of the page was intended to make it even more vague.
Usually when you add a second sentence, it makes it less vague.
Well, why, then, do we have all these folks who, I mean, really, people very familiar with this. I mean, we hear from the cemetery, Mr. Paulus has come down from Portland, Ms. Heich has testified, Mr. Moss, Ms. Duana. I mean, we've had an awful lot of people look at this and say, yep, we're talking about the cemetery.
It's a very emotional issue, but the, but the, the policy document does not say this is going through the cemetery. The policy document says Further Study Needed.
And Mayor, I think Ms. Warnke would like to add something.
Yes. I just wanted to say that early on in the early draft of this plan, maybe a year ago, there was, instead of what you see now, there was a little dash line, dash in the general area between Pioneer and City View Cemetery. And it was not intended to be showing a specific location, but it did create that impression amongst people. And so because of that, this was revised to try to be as vague as possible, but there are people, of course, who were still around during that process who might still think that is what is being proposed.
I think that Peter Fernandez, Director of Public Works, wants to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to, hopefully to add clarity and not, not further muddy...
Further vagueness, please.
Not further muddy the issue. The council has heard testimony from a large number of people in the community that would like to see the connection between Hoyt and Rural and be through the Pioneer Cemetery. And the council has heard testimony from a number of people that would not want that connection. And what, what, what the policy document that we have before you does not identify the cemetery. So I think that might be what the confusion is, that the policy document does not identify the cemetery. The policy document simply says there is, there is clearly a need for a connection somewhere between Hoyt and Rural, wherever it might be. And as Mr. Tosh says, it could be Commercial Street, it could be the other side of the western edge of City View Cemetery, or it could be through Pioneer Cemetery. So, so that is, what, what we have proposed is, we need to study this, there's obviously opinions on both sides, we need to come back. Now, when you ask, Councilor Bennett, will the staff be guided by the ordinance, by the vacation ordinance, the answer to that is absolutely yes. If the, if the conversation and the planning is, we should go through Pioneer Cemetery and we come to consensus among the community, that's the place, then we will know that council's direction is, if that's the case, it will be a pedestrian only connection. But if the connection happens to be west of Center View, you know, through the backside, that could be a ped and bike connection.
Do we need to take bicycle out of any discussion relative to Pioneer Cemetery in this planning document?
I think you could, you could take it out of the bike element and then we would only look at it as a pedestrian element, no matter where it is. Or you can leave it in and leave it the way it is. And I can assure you that we clearly understand council's direction.
Well, it's moot.
That if the connection is through the cemetery, it will not include bicycles.
But you can't get there from here because of this ordinance, so why wouldn't we just be consistent and take it out of the bicycle?
You can absolutely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, I see a couple other hands here, and I want to say, Councilor Thomas, I'm sorry, did you, had you had a question earlier, and did I not get back to you?
No.
I apologize.
Councilor Bennett was hogging the floor.
I'm sorry?
Councilor Bennett was hogging the floor.
Yes, all right. Well, it's now Councilor Thomas's turn. Here we go.
Well, I just want to thank everybody who came and testified regarding the bikes, and I hope that I'm on track in, in what I'm saying. I support all types, all modes of transportation. My concerns are, what types of safety requirements will be implemented? And I kind of made some notes before folks started testifying, and I broke down breaking, signaling helmets, and someone did mention Portland, and I read some information on the Portland laws, that 16 and under do have to have helmets, lighting gear, folks already mentioned lighted gear, mirrors, et cetera. Another question or concern would be, would there be something in the lines of, like, a skateboard safety training course? And I'm, I'm saying these concerns, I was driving down the street one day on Lancaster, and I'm constant, I'm constantly looking at my mirrors, both mirror side, rear view, and just turning my head so that I can always be aware of my surroundings. And I looked up in my rearview mirror, and I seen a young man grab hold of a semi truck, and it just scared me to death. Because my concern is, is safety for everyone, not just the pedestrians, or the bicyclists, or the skateboarders, but also folks on the, in the, the vehicles themselves. Because people are in such a hurry nowadays that they don't pay attention to anything anymore. So it's not just non-motorized vehicles. You're looking at the folks in the wheelchairs, or the, the hover rounds, or whatever they call those chairs. All those types of things. So my concern is, are we going to move this forward in this plan? Or am I kind of like off-base, or what?
The, the proposal before you tonight in this plan is related to policy, high-level policy language relating to promoting and encouraging the use of active modes of transportation, including safeboarding and skateboarding in a manner that is safe and works with other users of the roadway. The details of, you know, how you, you know, what requirements do you place on skateboarders? Is it the exact same as bicycles? Is it somewhat different? Is it more restrictive, less restrictive? Those details would be worked out as part of city code. And we have put together a, sort of a bulleted list of some preliminary concepts, including things such as no towing behind other vehicles, and turn, you know, obeying all, you know, turn signals, lighting. But that would be something we need to do more outreach on. We have had done, you know, limited outreach, we've done some working with our police department and with legal, but we still need to get down to the details of that, so that would be at a later time.
Okay, so if we did push this forward, we would then have the opportunity later to kind of refine what we would like to see in this particular portion?
Yes, in code. The policy language is really just saying, we think skateboarding is something we want to make accommodations for in our roadway systems somehow, with some regulations, but we need to determine what those are. Thank you.
Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Blasey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Julie, how long have we been working on this TSP amendment? Just help me, it's...
They say not as long as the Third Bridge.
Yeah. Second place, though.
The, we received a grant to start this work in about 2000, mid-2009, I want to say, yeah, mid-2009, and really got underway at the beginning of 2010. So we've been working on it for a couple of years.
And neighborhood associations, public hearings, forums, all the advisory boards to the city. And one of the, I guess my question is, can we pass the staff recommendation without the skateboard element and address that separately?
That would be totally up to council.
Yeah, but we could move this and get it done, and get the support for the biking and walking element that we really have been working for three years on, and then sort of take a look at the skateboard thing before, we could put it in place. Is staff waiting for us to complete the, I mean, do we have projects, or what's the cost of waiting another month or two on the whole thing to resolve the plan?
For adoption? Well, the, when we came, when we were here in September, we were ready to have council adopt this. I mean, we've been working on it for two years. Council delayed adoption so that we could do some preliminary work on the issue of skateboarding. We had a couple of meetings with, with representatives of the skateboard community. We're proposing this language that we feel makes the document even better and more inclusive, but, but we strongly recommend that council adopt this tonight. After two years of work, there's, there's nothing left to do, to do here tonight beyond the amendments that, 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 that we're talking about. And then after that is, if we want to move forward with skateboarding, there is code work to be done with skateboarding. If there is a connection between Rural and Hoyt, then there's work to be done, is how, how that can be done. But there's no more policy work to be done on this document.
Sure. And have we looked at ODOT policy and Portland policy on, on skateboard in your preliminary work?
We have, there really is not, I have not really found any policy language out there. I've found code language in Portland, the city of Ashland has code language, there's some other places around the country. I haven't seen specific policy languages, but I do think that it is supportive of the move towards, you know, multimodal transportation and all forms of transportation.
Sure. My concern is, we're now putting pedestrians in the travel lanes who happen to have a longboard under them. So I think, as a matter of policy, it was brought up in the testimony that Portland has a fair use law, so they really don't have a, a, a policy statement, then.
Well, there, I think their code is essentially their policy to support skateboarding.
Thanks.
All right. Councilor Blasey, and then Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Julie, I just want to be clear, going back to the discussion a couple of minutes ago about the connector, and I apologize, but I, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're settled on this and that we don't somehow remove language, that we have worked, you know, quite hard to, to be vague enough to be clear. My concern is that if we take out bicycle from the way it's worded now, we potentially take out the possibility, if a decision is made later, that there also needs to be a connector along Commercial. So, and I don't even know if I'm, I'm making that, you know, that, the right, right call there, but I, I think, and so my question is, I think the way you have it worded right now addresses, just, the question is whether or not we are, we're covered where the wording currently gives us the option, whether it's through the cemetery, through additional work that needs to be done, whether it's to the west of that or to the east of that. The way you have it worded allows for different possibilities, but if we change this wording, we potentially remove some of those possibilities, including a pedestrian path through the cemetery. Is that vague, specific enough?
Well, I guess I'll just say that as staff, you know, we're looking for direction from council, and, and, you know, and maybe future staff, to, you know, what is it that we are trying to achieve between Rural and Hoyt? Are we trying to achieve connectivity for pedestrians, or for bicyclists, or for both? And, you know, as Randall mentioned, you know, this is going to need a refinement study. We'll have to come back and amend the TSP. And so, you know, that would be an opportunity for saying, well, given the work that we've done, it appears that a pedestrian connection is, you know, we should have a pedestrian-only connection, or maybe we have a bicycle connection in one place, a pedestrian connection in another place. Peter, you want to add anything?
Well, only, only that if, if, if this piece, if this map is removed from the bicycle element, then it would be very clear policy direction that we are only to look at pedestrian connections between, between those two points, wherever it may land.
Okay.
If they're in both, it tells us that there is more flexibility as we embark on a refinement to consider, you know, all modes of, of non-motorized transportation between those connections. And I say again, that we understand, based on the, what was in the ordinance, that if, if the refinement plan calls for connection within the Pioneer Cemetery, that it will only be pedestrian. So, so it's whatever council, whatever direction council wants to give us, we will adhere to.
And I just want to, I want to be very clear that this does not authorize a pedestrian connection through the cemetery.
I realize that.
It does not. And that will take an amendment to the transportation system plan, which is the proper time to address all the issues that have been raised about Goal Five.
Right. Yeah, I think we, we realize that.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In that same vein, is not Commercial right now a connector between Rural and Hoyt?
Yes, there is, there are...
So there's already a connection?
There are sidewalks and bike lanes on Commercial Street. I believe that, recalling the testimony from the advocates, it is not a very comfortable connection, especially southbound for a bicycle, you'd have to get on the sidewalk or cross the street. So, so that is what, what the advocates of a connection have said, is they recognize there's a connection, it's just not, it's not, it's not a more, it's not a very comfortable connection.
They've also mentioned that to the far west end as well, that it's tortuous and not...
That is correct.
Advisable.
That is correct.
There's a lot of other places in town that don't show your little dots either, that people use for connectivity for bikes and pedestrians. We actually had a line originally between those, right through the cemetery, and that's what we removed from this plan several years ago. That's why people think it's still there, and just with our other decisions, they know that's where it's going to go, if we do it, other than what's already there, which is a Commercial Cross. So that's, that's what the, the map is. I don't think it can be vague because of the other decisions that have been made. But my question would be, is, this says, "Further Study Needed," and we're giving you that policy direction. When would you implement said policy direction, and who would make the decision to study it?
I believe that we would put it in the budget at some future date, that we were going to embark on this process. Embarking on a process like this would probably involve, like we do many other processes, we would ask members of the community to participate in the process, to evaluate what is the best alternative, and we would work through it and see if we could come to something that we could then bring back, work through, to a solution that we could then bring back to the council.
But it would be a budgeted item that we would see long before anybody starts studying it and chose it to council after it's been studied?
I, I think this one is, is big enough that we would want to, at a minimum, alert council that we were embarking on, on the process.
Would you like to be more specific about that and ask us to bring it back to council before we would start, begin a study?
That would be a piece for deliberations, more than likely. I was just trying to determine what would happen down the road if this were to actually stay in.
We would work with the community.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any further questions of staff? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will now have deliberation. Do I hear any comments from counselors, any motions being put forward? Councilor Clem?
Yes, I would move staff recommendation, including following changes for the Willamette University across campus path, all of that under number one. And then number two, amend street system element, policy 2-1, multimodal street design. And then, as a new, replace the number three for this travel-by-skateboard with directing staff to bring back information related to skateboard policy when, when done.
And I'll second that. Is there a discussion? Councilor Clem, would you like to speak to your motion, and then we'll go to others for discussion?
Yeah, I, I think, as I've heard testimony, we've heard testimony tonight from a couple of folks that have had encounters with cars. I'm not worried about skateboarders, the longboarders. I'm worried about us making a major policy shift in front of our citizens, because I'm not sure that they perceive that skateboarders ought to be right in the middle of a, of a shareau or a downtown street. The concern is, is that we, we have an education process, and we should have some strong discussion at council level about what are the considerations before we start a major policy shift. Many of, much of the work in the last two and a half years has not included the public on skateboard. This recently just came up. There hasn't been any sort of understanding of what the safety requirements are. I was hoping to hear a little bit more of that tonight, but I think we've been working on this for two and a half years. I think we need to get the bike, we need to get this, this TSP amendment made, and then I think we need to take a look at what the skateboard issues are. I, I, in 1995, testified in these council chambers that I thought the skateboard park was what the community needed, and then, as a National Guard officer, helped build the skateboard park. I think skateboards have got a, a future in our transportation system. I just don't know if the public has had enough ramp-up time, if you will, to get used to the fact that we're going to have skateboards in downtown. Before we make a major policy shift, or at least add this to the bike element, which I'm not sure it really goes, but to our transportation system plan, I think we should have some more information and see what Portland is doing and Ashland is doing. And, and rather than hold up the TSP amendment that's needed, take a look at that separately. So I support skateboards, a number of the communities in Polk County have longboard competitions and close off streets and really advocate for it. But where we've got intersecting highways downtown, Front Street, Pringle, is a state highway with trucks on it, 22 Wallace, I'm very concerned that beyond local streets, which some people may be using now to get to and from around town on skateboards, I'm very concerned about them being hit. And before we throw them out there in the traffic, I think we need to get the public educated and make sure that we have a well-thought-out system for all of the safety considerations to include street design. Because I'm not sure that it supports, with our downtown diagonal parking, it's hard enough when you're pulling out to see a car coming down Commercial, but now there's going to be a person on a skateboard, wow. That's very scary in terms of, of just pulling out of a parking spot downtown. So I would encourage that we move this along and then take a look at the skateboard issue separately.
All right. There were a couple of hands over here to talk to the motion, or about the motion. Councilor Nanki and, I believe, Councilor Clausen? Or was it, I'm sorry, Councilor Blasey? Okay, Councilor Nanki.
I saw a bunch of hands while it was.
Oh, all right, all right. Well, we'll just start again. All right, Councilor Nanki now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move a substitute motion, staff recommendation with the, the three additions as included in the staff report.
Second.
If I may speak to that substitute, that third item, travel-by-skateboard, doesn't say we're doing anything. I mean, you take a look at the map we were looking at earlier, it's basically recognizing that people travel through our town on skateboard. It doesn't say they can skate in downtown. That would all be reliant on more communication with all of the, the mode people to determine where and, and under what conditions will allow that travel in certain areas of town. But this is basically just saying, yes, we do support all active modes of transportation, and you're one of them. And that was the reason why we brought it up originally, is to recognize that they are a mode of transportation that's, that's being used more and more by a large portion of our young folks and others.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop you for a moment here, because you're proposing an, an amendment or a substitute?
No, substitute motion, which is basically staff recommendation.
Substitute motion, okay. Substitute motion, okay. We'll speak to your motion in a moment, but I don't think we have a second yet, do we?
Yeah.
To your motion? You seconded it?
I seconded.
All right, thank you. All right, I, all right, we'll go back. Go on.
No, it's just recognizing that skateboard is a method or mode of transportation. It's not giving them any rights or anything. It's just recognizing that it is a mode, which is what the second one does as well, which is to accommodate motorized and non-motorized, which is kind of what we recommended originally, because there's lots of different things that are, unicycle, I suppose, is considered a bike when you look at those rules, but there was nothing to actually recognize a four-wheel that somebody's standing on top of, that it actually is a mode of transportation.
All right. Counselor Blasey, I think you had your hand up. Counselor, let me go to Counselor Dickey first, and Counselor Thomas.
I'll go. I'll say something.
I'll go.
I'll say something.
I'll go.
I'll say something.
I'll go.
Okay. Yeah, I have a couple of things to say. And first thing I would like to say is, I would like to thank staff for working on this issue. When I made the motion back in September, I think it was, staff went back and very quickly put together some information and did a lot of research that they could do on this issue and plan to do outreach after we pass this tonight, which hopefully we will do that. So I just want to thank them for doing that. I know, I really appreciate how they came up with a way for us to address both. Couple of things. In 1994, there was a state law, a helmet law passed that includes bicycles, skateboards, roller blades, roller skates, those kinds of things, for all kids in Oregon under the age of 16. So that is a law, it has been a law. And I would just kind of say about that, all you have to do is have bicycle duty at a middle school to know that there's a lot of kids under 16 that aren't wearing helmets with their bikes. I don't know, I can't speak to the longboards. What we heard tonight, people were saying they're being safe, they're wearing helmets. I heard no one say, I'm concerned about kids riding their bikes without helmets. I know when I, when I have worked bike duty before and I say, you can't ride your bike out of this school without wearing a helmet, I think I felt like I may have been the only adult who ever said that. And I just bring that up to say, you know, safety is an issue whether you're riding your bike or walking, or on a skateboard, or in a car, or however you're getting from one place to the other. And there are a lot of people that, a lot of, in my opinion, parents who are somewhat negligent in not having their kids wear helmets with riding their bikes. So I would say what we saw here tonight was exceptional to maybe what in some areas or some people are doing, just in the general public. So I don't have a concern about the safety, because I, I'm convinced from what we've heard tonight that these people are being responsible and, and being responsible for their own safety. So I appreciate that. So, and I, I also did just want to mention that by adding this back in and keeping this skateboarding as a mode of transportation, that doesn't mean that suddenly we're going to have 3,000 longboarders commuting in and out of Salem every day. This just gives some, this helps clarify, for those people who are doing that, I think it's really important. They're doing it, they will still be commuting, the group that is doing that. So I think acknowledging that they are a valid alternative mode of transportation is really important, and look forward to the opportunity to clarify that in the future. And then just kind of along that line, just to say that, you know, I really believe this isn't about kids playing in a skate park or building recreation facilities, but this is about people getting from point A to point B, and another way for them to be able to do that.
All right. Who wants to speak next? Counselor Blasey?
I'll be brief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
I just want to say, I do have a concern. I have a concern about safety, but my concern is that we don't include longboards and skateboards and other transportation in this safety plan, and we don't move forward with it included, because I think this puts it in, it puts it in a place where it will be acknowledged, it will be recognized, it can then be incorporated and included in any public outreach we do, any safety training we do. It will, it'll put it right in there with everything else. And my concern is if we remove it, hoping that, you know, in the future, we'll do additional studies, I guess I have a concern that, that that won't happen. You know, maybe it will, but this is the place to do it. Staff have done a commendable job. We've had folks come out, tell us what needs to be included. It's been included. Now let's move forward, let's make it part of our transportation safety and address it. And if we have concerns about safety, we address it as we go forward.
Okay. Counselor Thomas, did you have a comment? Counselor Bennett? Counselor Tesler? Counselor Bennett first, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I'm going to support this amendment, or this alternative motion, substitute motion. If I understood the answers and the discussion from counselors Blasey and Nanki, that to make any changes, or the changes that I was contemplating in terms of perhaps removing this language from the bicycle portion would preclude a bicycle alternative, if, if I understood that correctly, occurring to the west of the cemetery or something like that. And I, I guess that's what I understood. Is that correct? If, if something happened to this, then we would lose that possibility, which is not at all what I'm interested in. I'm just not, I'm interested in seeing the intention of the ordinance we passed at the vacation honored, which is that if there is going to be a pedestrian path through the cemetery, it go through the kind of process that was described by Mr. Paulus, the city attorney, and Ms. Heisch in terms of a, of a review, and that it be done. I really don't care if the staff does anything on this. I think this thing will only be solved when the people that are interested in this and have interest in it, sit down and work this thing out. I think all the staff could do is muddy the waters on this issue. So hopefully it'll get resolved and resolved quickly by the people who have real direct interest in it. So I'm going to support Counselor Nanki's motion. I think otherwise, we'd end up with even a worse mess. I tried my amendment.
All right. Counselor Nanki. Excuse me. Counselor Tesler is next.
Thank you for that. I would just like to say, I'm going to support the substitute motion. I would like to say that I also second what my cohort Counselor Bennett was talking about too, because I am quite concerned that we do stay true to the nature and intent of our ordinance. The other thing that I would like people to think about is that, we've talked about longboards, we've talked about bicyclists. I haven't really spent a whole lot of time talking about pedestrians' safety. I really, really, really want to voice my concern about pedestrians who do not wear reflective clothing, who dress in dark clothes, who walk on the side of Front Street. When I'm driving home, and I almost hit somebody the other day, and I almost had a heart attack because I came this close to hitting somebody, and they were dressed completely in black, and I could not see them. And you see this every day, every night when you walk around. And when I drive home tonight, I'll see somebody walking down the street dressed in black. And so you really need to be conscious as a pedestrian, please, this person that wore the vest today, you know, I wish everybody had a vest like that. It's very, very dangerous to be a pedestrian and not make yourself seen. I cannot see you in a car. The other thing is, I, anybody who rides their bike in the really horrible weather that we've had the last couple of weeks, I salute you and commend you, because it rains and my bike gets hung up in the garage until it's dry again. But there are people that every day bike and skate to work, and I see them. And I see them biking and skating in snow, in rain, in sleet, in wind, and we need to make sure that we give them the opportunity to do that in a safe and practical manner. And I'm seeing more people do that over the years. I like that. We should encourage that. It's a healthy lifestyle. I grew up with skaters and punk rockers and those kind of people, and it was a great community and shaped a great part of who I am today, so I can totally empathize with what everybody was saying from the skater community. And we need to empathize, we need to support and empathize with people who want to have a healthy lifestyle, and who, who want to use something other than a car to get to point A to point B and to get to work. And we have the right as people who do not use an automobile to be able to do that in a safe fashion. And so I really want to urge everybody to think about that as we move forward and hopefully pass this tonight. And if you're a pedestrian, please, think about yourself at night. You are invisible at night. And I don't want to ever hit somebody, because I would feel horrible my entire life, even if it wasn't my fault. So that being said, that's what I'd like to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to actually speak off on the side of a couple of things. There's safety issues all over the place. None of that is what we're doing here tonight. We, for, for these items that are, for additions. But, you know, pedestrians, I used to ride a motorcycle, and that was my sole source of transportation. I had four of them. And you do develop a seventh sense. It's like, that driver's going to change lanes by micro-movements, and watching, you know when they're going to change lanes. I was hit, our former police chief was hit walking across the street downtown. So it's, more pedestrians are smacked in this community than skateboarders probably will ever be. It's all a matter of those conflicts and where they are. And so those are the, the issues we need to deal with. But yeah, I see tons of folks in dark clothing trying to thin their own jean pool, I suppose. But it's the person that actually hit someone that, that actually then is traumatized for the rest of their life. So, but you, you have to be careful on what you regulate and how you regulate it, and people's freedoms. I hate the seatbelt law. I think it's okay to stick a helmet on a kid under 16, because they sometimes just don't know better, but hopefully their parents would have taught them to know better. So it, it starts getting funky in that spot. Lastly, on the, the map, I was going to actually move to just pull the map out of there, since we have to change the, the plan anyway down the line if we want to do anything there. But I'll leave it as it is.
All right. We have a substitute motion, and we will vote on the substitute motion. Is there any further discussion on the substitute motion? All right. It was moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Dickey. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Sounds like the ayes have it. All right. That's it?
That's it.
All right. We're going to take a very quick break and let people adjust themselves or leave the chambers. And again, I want to say thank you for all who came to testify, and thank you for the courteous repertory back and forth. Thank you.[1404.58] Thank you.[204.59]
That would like to actually follow along with this or have the ability to at least go onto a CCTV archive and pop it up to see what was really said. And I know CCTV is really close and we talked about potentially moving that past when they have their installation completed. Have we looked at all and no one that's actually gonna happen?
I have not heard the date yet. I thought last week we were about a week away. We're talking about a tentative date for December 17th for the next work session. We'll be polling councilors tomorrow about that, but I'll find out if the room will be ready and if not, I think they can just do handheld cameras or something remote.
It would just be nice, since it has a potential to impact many, many people in the community, that they should be able to see what it is we're talking about.
Absolutely. And we did also discuss having more information on the city website and perhaps having a special website just for this or certainly a page on our website or a section. But we're looking at those technological aids as well and we want to get as much information out as we can in as clear a manner as possible. We don't want to overload with, you know, bureaucratic things. Oh, we wouldn't do that. But we are looking at ways to be up to date in our communication patterns with the public. Let's see, Councilor Claussen, did you want to make a comment?
I did, thank you. I do think it's important, though, that we continue on and not wait for the sake of getting the cameras. I'd rather ask CCTV to get cameras there. I think we keep some momentum going on this. I think that's very important, you know, after we've had a very great first discussion, let's make sure we don't wait too long before our follow-up.
Great. And that date that we're looking at and we'll be polling all of the council is a Monday, December 17th. So that would be between the two meetings. It would actually be canceled. It might be better to do, to try to go ahead, even if you can adjust your calendars, so that we have a couple of meetings under our belt before we start the new year, but we'll see what we can do.
Right.
Okay, good.
And we'll try, if that doesn't, if that date doesn't work for everyone, we'll try to find a date that does in December.
Early morning's good, 6:00 AM.
On December 26th, perhaps?
Yeah.
Perhaps, yeah, we'll be ready, okay. All right. I've forgotten exactly where we are, so thank you, all right. We're discussing canceling the public hearing. And I believe we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the staff recommendation to cancel that public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. We're gonna move now to special orders of business and we'll start with the consent calendar items that were pulled. And I'm working back through here and I noticed that it's 3.3A, which was pulled by Councilor Dickey. Councilor Dickey, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Dickey and seconded by Councilor Clem to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Uh-huh. Yeah, just really briefly, I mean, we just had a really long discussion about our TSP and incorporating bicycle and pedestrian elements into it. And I was just really happy to see this project get, be on our agenda as an identified project. Having worked in many of the schools in the Salem-Kaiser School District, I am amazed at how many of them, I see children walking to school not on sidewalks because there are no sidewalks to get kids from where they live to the schools that they attend, among other things. I mean, that's, that's a huge thing, getting kids there safely, but that's also getting people where they need to go to the store or to work or places like that. So I was really happy to see this and I know that there are other areas, I know there's areas in West Salem that have a real need, other areas in North Salem and South Salem that have similar needs. So I just wanted to say I heartily support this and this happens to be one of those areas where we're gonna be able to coordinate with Marion County to do more. Usually it's, we have our sidewalks, Marion County doesn't have their sidewalks, and in this case, Marion County's putting some in. And so I think this is gonna be a great collaboration to be able to get more bang for the buck for that area. I mean, that, so, anyway, yeah, thanks.
Wonderful. Councilor Clem?
Yes, just wanted to share with the council that at the recent SCATS meeting, of all the projects in our region, in our SCATS urban growth area, that all of the members of SCATS unanimously prioritized Brown Road.
Excellent.
So Marion County, Turner School District, Pope County, and Salem, we've, we've looked at, and Marion County's putting in its improvements before we get, so it's real awkward that if we didn't move forward here, we'd have county property where kids were safe, big open area, and then schools. And so it really is a number-one priority in terms of not only pedestrian safety and bike safety, but as well, these are areas where not only schools are, but it was identified for transit priority as well as, it's weird, we've got this county area right in the middle of Salem. So, you know, they've prioritized rural needs, this urban need over rural needs. So I think that's very interesting. That's how badly it's needed. But all of our partners in the region amongst their own projects, and you heard West Salem Neighborhood Chair also had indicated that brown priority was a higher priority than in his own neighborhood next to schools. So I think that goes to speak how significant this project is and how badly it's needed.
Absolutely. All right, further comment? All right, the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, I believe that was our only poll. Right, all right. And now we will go to a special management report. Would the city manager like to introduce that or?
Yes, I would. This is, and Mr. Fernandez will speak too, we have a short presentation on our High Water Watch website, which is going to be important this week and through the winter that people can see how to access its information. Mr. Fernandez, is there more you want to add?
Yes, thank you. I'm delighted to introduce Justin Boynton from our stormwater operations staff. Justin and his colleagues have worked hard to put together these webpages that provide us with real-time information from the creek monitoring stations that, that we have in town and they are very, very useful in, in these times. When, when we're not looking at flows, they provide us other useful information related to the health of our creeks, but I think for tonight, we're gonna focus on the, on the flows. So with that, Justin, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Peter. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, councilors, and everybody in attendance. As Peter mentioned, my name's Justin Boynton, I'm the stormwater monitoring analyst for the Public Works Department. As you are all aware, Salem is not immune to flooding and we were all reminded of this unfortunate reality. On January 19th, 2012, when a number of streams across the Salem area overtopped their banks, setting their floodwaters down our streets, into backyards, and a number of cases into structures. As damaging as this flood event was, it did provide an opportunity to collect immense amount of field data, which in turn allowed staff to correlate those observations with flooding impacts with recorded stage levels collected by the various stream gauging stations across our city. For this presentation, I will demonstrate how some of this new information is accessible for the, for use by the city and its residents so that we can all improve our response to future flood events. For the past two years, the city has been providing stream stage data via the internet on the High Water Watch website. And the current slide is the front page of this website, showing the locations of each of the stations and providing links for three days' worth of stage data. So we currently have 10 stations, all of which provide data in five-minute intervals. And in addition, we have just finished the construction of three new stations, which are gonna be located on Shelton Ditch, the West Fork, the Little Pudding River, and Pringle Creek. These new stations will be incorporated into the website by January 2013. So until recently, the only data provided on this web, on these webpages was a three-day chart of recorded stage levels and the high-water watch level. The current slide is an example of what used to be provided. On this slide is an example of what viewers will now see when selecting a station off of this website. I should also note that all the screen captures made from this website were all made during the Thanksgiving week storm just a couple of weeks ago. So you're gonna see some very, you know, high levels and going over different warning levels. So from the data collected from the last January flood event, we've been able to determine flood levels for all of our stations and major flood levels for the vast majority of the stations. In addition, we now provide the specific flood impact levels for a number of these stations as well. And these flood impact levels are generally tied to areas where stream flooding first occurred, following, followed by the level when widespread flooding began to occur along the stream. On this slide is a screen capture of the Lower Battle Creek Station. I included this slide because it really points to the importance of understanding that these flood impact levels are related to what happened during the January flood event. And you should note that all storm events are, are different and so that these levels should really only be used as a general guideline. For example, the first item in the flood impact level states that above 9.6 feet, roadway flooding occurred along Fairway Avenue, Woodside Drive, Wiltsey Road, Magistrate, and Magistrate Street. However, during the Thanksgiving week storm event, we did see roadside flooding on Woodside Drive, even knowing this station peaked at nine feet during this event. And this was due to the severity and intensity of the rainfall that fell during this event, as opposed to last January event, which you had a longer duration and more moderate intensity I also include a screen capture of the Lower Clark Creek Station. Note the flashy characteristics of this stream. Again, this is the exact same time span as all the other charts that I've shown. And in fact, all Salem streams respond a little bit differently during flood events. So I want to caution everybody here that as you are looking at these webpages and you want to get a sense of the city as a whole, you really have to look at all the stations, not just one. In addition, we'll be adding, as new information becomes available, we will be adding that information onto this website. For example, during the Thanksgiving week storm event, just a couple of weeks ago, that event produced the highest recorded stage reading for this station to date on Clark Creek. And this information will be added, similar to as you see here, in the coming weeks. So to recap, flood impact levels have been added to this website and they're all based on the January 19th flood event as of right now. And they serve as a general guideline to help the city provide a more effective response to future flooding events. And in addition, this information helps to communicate significant flood impact levels to the public so that they can make more informed decisions for the protection of their own property. And as new information becomes available, it will be added to this website. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? I believe Councilor Bennett and then Councilor Nanki and Councilor Dickey.
Could you go back to, to, thank you, Madam Mayor, to Clark Creek? On, on one where you get that sort of a pattern, do you, do you also use this information to say, you know, we ought to be out looking at that creek and basin and there's something wrong, that it looks like this on a, or?
Absolutely. And the whole purpose of, of putting these stations in, in the ground in the first place was to really get us a better look at the hydrographs of each of these streams so that we can better, you know, manage our storm water into the future. I don't know if you want to add anything more, Peter?
It, it's not just a flooding, a piece of flooding information, it is, we've got a problem in Clark, the Clark Creek little basin and it needs to be.
Right. I mean, you know, our, especially our in-town creeks are highly, highly impacted.
Yeah.
You know, my sense is what you're seeing here is that, you know, we opened up the basin at the, at, you know, the South High baseball fields and, and, and used it. And that's why you see the flash, but then you see the, the lowering because we were using that. Over time, we really have to make investments throughout the community to address, you know, the highly impacted areas of our, you know, all of our creeks. You know, we're kind of starting, Councilor Claussen is gonna bring a motion about Wallon Creek and that's gonna be a start. You know, we invested in Battle Creek and have done significant improvements there from what was otherwise highly impacted, but we got, we got a lot of work to do in this town and this is, you know, so we can address these things. And this will be very, very useful information that will guide us in, in what to do and how to address it and, and we can experiment with basins and the likes.
That's great.
And then after the January storm, we wanted to put this into place so that we had for ourselves and community members had for themselves a better early warning when the creeks or the river levels are rising. And then as we, we have another project in which council's approved for funding and for us to apply for grant for, but in the future, we'll have much more information from these tools that, you know, if Mill Creek is at this level and it's raining at this, this amount, we will have an idea what's gonna happen with the creek farther into town. So all of this, I think, will give us just wonderful information to help prevent flooding and to give people enough warning time so that they can take precautionary measures.
Right. By Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I, similar, if, if people don't know this stream system, well, it is highly piped prior to that, to when it gets there, so. And you can tell when you hear that, eh, on the roof where it goes, everything is running in those streets and just hitting that pipe with no detention whatsoever and it's just flying down to that park at the bottom of the hill. And, and that's what those are. And it's not really much, you, you can't slow down a pipe, per se, without having, you know, serious ramifications through all the streets and what have you, but that's the difference between a pipe stream and a, a natural stream.
At, at that point, Clark Creek has gone through a pipe and before that has gone through a concrete basin by South High School. So it is highly, highly accelerated at that point. One of the, we had had thoughts of opening up Clark Creek there as part of our Busch Park project and we had to unfortunately give up on, on opening it up, just, just that little piece right there because we needed to get the rest of the project done. But wherever we can, I mean, we're really headed into an era of, you know, more detention basins, more open channel flow instead of pipe flow, maybe even opening up creeks that are, that are in pipes. And, you know, this is a very long-term, lots of, lots of money, but that's really where we're headed to be able to address not just the, the pollution issues, but also to address the flooding issues. It's a multi-phased issue.
I believe Councilor Dickey had a comment or question?
I do have a question, thank you, Mayor. Let me see if I asked this right. So, and this is, this is great, by the way, this is really helpful. I am curious to know if are all of these creeks in our city limits or are there creeks that are outside of our city limits that could affect our residents within the city that we don't monitor but somebody else monitors?
No.
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 Yeah. I mean, really, the short answer to that is, is no. There, with the exception of a gauging station that actually the city now monitors, just took over managing from the USGS, that's located on Salem Ditch, that's hydrologically connected to the North San Em. Other than that, there are no gauging stations that are being monitored on streams that, that find their way into the city. So, you know, with the exception of that other gauging station, that's, it's actually in Staten. That's the only other piece of information that we currently have at this time. Now, the grant application that the city manager mentioned, within the conceptual design for that grant application was, you know, noting the need for an additional gauging station up in the Mill Creek watershed in order to help us provide a lead time for that particular stream so that we can have some advance warning, so we know what's coming down through the watershed.
Thanks, that's great. Other comments by councilors? I'd like to say, I was so appreciative, Sam Kidd, and I wish you'd stand up so people know who you are, who is with Public Works, was very kind. I visited the Public Works Department out at the shops on the day, I believe Tuesday, just before Thanksgiving, as everyone was monitoring the stream levels and the Public Works crews were out literally day and night and they were cleaning catch basins, which I now understand what a catch basin really is, thanks to Peter Fernandez's artwork. And I had a chance to talk to people out at the shops and they were working, you know, many of them had worked late into the night and were back there in the morning and there were sandbags being distributed. But there were also staff, and I got to meet them, who collect all of this information. And I'm, I'm telling you, it's computer screens, street, screens of data. And then we get this wonderful chart to look at. And I just marveled at all of the intense work that people were doing there, even at computer screens through the night, so that these levels were accurately reported and plotted, so that when I went on the website, and I did, and I encourage you all and I encourage the public to do this, I could actually click on these various gauging stations and monitor the flow and the levels. And it was fascinating to me and I appreciate even more really what the people do in, in Public Works and they are so often never seen in these council chambers. And so thanks to you and, and to Mr. Kidd and Mr. Fernandez and all of the staff that work on that. And I think we're a safer city for the changes and the improvements made between last January and November. So job well done. Councilor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo those comments. I have to say, this storm, while we flooded some areas on Woodside and such, it flooded just as bad as, in that area as it did in January in South Salem. But what was awesome was, we went over to, or I was out and about for most of the afternoon after that real hard rain hit. And out at Battle Creek, Battle Creek took all that flow and all the issues we had down 13th and Packwood and such was taken on Battle Creek. And that was a project that just finished, where we took out a culvert that went under one of the fairways, under what used to be the Battle Creek Golf Course. And, you know, I think people need to know that Public Works isn't just sitting on their hands in their offices, they are looking at these projects, what we need to do. And, I mean, their biggest problem is us, we can't fund them. So that's really where we're at and that's gonna be the crux of my motion, is figuring out, okay, what do we have to do to, now we've identified a real critical piece in South Salem, and how does it get there? So good work to Public Works again, and I think we, as a councillor, headed the right way with the stormwater utility so we can actually kind of make sure we're keeping up on this and not getting the Clark Creeks and not getting the Battle Creeks and the, and the Wallon Creeks having issues, so, yep.
That's great, thanks. I'm glad you mentioned out there, I was driving around too, we probably were like, you know, crossing around each other. And I was really impressed with the way Wallon Creek carried that volume of water and the difference between November and in January, when we went out in our boots. Councilor Thomas?
I just had a quick question. I didn't notice that Pringle Creek and Mill Creek wasn't showed on here.
No, I mean, they weren't shown here, but they are on the website and I'll just scroll back to that real quick. So if you were to log into this website and you were to click on the links on the lower left-hand side of the page, you'll see that we have two stations on Pringle Creek labeled Pringle Creek Number Three and Pringle Creek Number Four, or Twelve, excuse me. And then in addition to that, we do have two sites on Mill Creek, Mill Creek Number Three and Mill Creek Number Twelve. But for the presentation, I, I didn't include those particular streams in the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comment, questions? Councilor Blasey?
I just have a real quick comment. I think this website is amazing. I mean, in addition to these monitoring levels, I'm scrolling through this, this is the first time I've seen this, and these are really, I mean, this is some fantastic information. And as councilors, you know, we're out at neighborhood associations and these are the types of questions we always get and I, you know, I never, I struggle with the answer and I think, you know, from here on out, just being able to tell people, we have this amazing website, you know, there's all this information. And what I really like is there's a whole bunch of information on here about what people can do in their own neighborhoods to help prevent some of this and, you know, in addition to these, these water levels, I don't, I don't know who put this together, but there's just tons of information that I think will be really helpful to people, you know, on a, just on a regular basis, so thank you.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Great. Particularly timely that you're here tonight. Do you or Mr. Fernandez want to make any comment about the water levels right now? I know we have a watch going, et cetera.
It's rising.
Yes?
It's rising.
It's rising, all right. So watch the website because this will be very interesting to watch.
I will say that, you know, as of right now, looking at what NOAA is predicting for what's supposed to happen the rest of tonight and into tomorrow, as of right now, they're looking at a very large band of rain that's supposed to hit tomorrow afternoon, just in time for evening commute. It's, right now, they're calling for the type of rainfall intensity to where we're liable to see a similar event to what we saw Thanksgiving week. What that does to Mill Creek is a little bit, you know, left to be determined, but, you know, where all of our streams besides Mill Creek should peak, you know, late Tuesday night, real early Tuesday morning, Mill Creek has that delay because it's such a larger watershed that just because the other streams are going down, we continue to watch Mill Creek on Wednesday because it will continue to go up and it should be watched.
Okay. And again, sandbags have been?
Yes, we have sandbags out at 11 sites and they're always available at the Public Workshop on 25th Street.
Councilor Tesler?
You want to keep an eye on the Willamette, too, because the Willamette is pretty much the perfect storm with the creek levels because once the Willamette gets up to a certain level, the creeks cannot flow into the Willamette and then the Willamette will back up all the creeks right into the city. And I think all this discussion should leave us with a couple of thoughts. And, you know, one thought is that I was particularly grateful for the people who thought about Gilmore Field the last time we had a big flood because if there wouldn't have been Gilmore Field there, that whole area on Berry Street would have been underwater. There was water, we went down there and it was completely full when we went down there and overflowing, overtopping and coming down. And there must have been at least 12 to 15 feet of water in there at that point, in that whole Gilmore Field. That's a lot of acre feet of water. So I was particularly grateful for whoever thought of that and installed that, and it makes a wonderful baseball field in the summer, but it really does protect that neighborhood in, right below it. And, you know, we should think about someday taking that concrete out away from Clark Creek in the back of the track. I would really be curious what would happen to that flashy flow if we could get, you know, that concrete away because what that does is it just turns the creek into a flume, just like Wallon Creek is. And Wallon Creek is straight and the water just blooms down like a mill race. And, you know, if you don't have any sinuosity and you have concrete and the water cannot permeate and there's not vegetation to slow things down, that's exactly what you get, it's just this big rush like that. So I was curious why there wasn't a flood station above Gilmore. You know, a stage, that would be interesting to have a stage above Gilmore.
Sure, they're, they are $50,000 apiece.
Yeah, they're spendy.
Is that right? So it's just, yeah, they're, they're just, we, 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 we have plans to do more, they just have to be funded to, to do more.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, all right. Moving on in the agenda, we have no unfinished business. You saw information reports in your packets and were there any questions about any of the information reports? Councilor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask the city manager about item E and F. There are two, one's the status of the current park projects, the other's the update on the 2008 Streets and Bridges. Did you want to?
Yes, I, I'll just say, if you have an opportunity, and I'm sure you have already, to read the staff report on the projects, there have been just a number of great projects for this community that have been completed. And I think that's very positive and will be a big part of the master plan report that comes forward. And then one of the things I'd like to point out about the 2008 Streets and Bridges General Obligation Bond Program is as of July, about 92% of the funds that had been spent at that time on these projects went to local contractors, contractors in the area, which I think is just a wonderful testament to both our contractors and, you know, getting good price for these projects, but how well this money is being spent to help people in our local economy.
Absolutely. That money turns over again and again in the community. So I've, as I was looking over these reports and last week as we were talking about this, it's a significant benefit here in this community that the public saw fit to pass the Streets and Bridges bond measure because Because what it really has meant is that there have been a lot of jobs available here, the likes of which other communities have not experienced, because they didn't have the Public Works projects like we have had with Streets and Bridges, with the Fire Bond, with Shemeka Community Colleges Bond, the Salem Kaiser School District Bond. All of those projects have really provided jobs here that make a tremendous difference to the health of the community. So, thank you voters for those. All right, let's see what we have left. Any other questions on information reports? All right, we have first readings on ordinances. Would the City Recorder like to introduce the ordinances, the first readings?
Ordinance Bill Number 2712 relating to alarm systems, rem numbering and amending SRC 38.170, 38.175, 38.035, 38A.050, 38A-100, and 38A-200, rem numbering SRC 38A-010 and 38A-030, establishing new Salem Revised Code Chapter 57 alarm systems, and repealing SRC 38.010, 020, 045, 055, 065, 080, 090, 100, 110, 120, 130, 135, 140, 150, 160, 180, 990, 38A-210, 220, and 990.
Thank you. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Head.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by Counselor Thomas. Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor. Again, this applies to fire only, is correct.
That's right.
Okay. And are there any new fees or fines built into this? Or is this kind of a rework? Do you recall?
It's mostly housekeeping.
Okay.
What we had was, we had in our Police Protective Licensing Title, which we're currently reviewing, this was one of the chapters that was in there. It was a permitting system for fire alarms, and it had not been basically used for years. And so, it's part of that code cleanup.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Counselor Claussen.
Just a question. How often do we do this? Do we...
Do what?
Exercise the false alarm fee.
We have Jim Stewart, our Fire Marshal here, and he can respond to that.
Just because I don't want people to shut their alarms off.
That's right.
So...
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Jim Stewart, Deputy Chief of Fire, and I've saved you from the Fire Department. This, the provisions of this ordinance is current, and if enacted and cleaned up, give the ability to impose a fine if we have multiple false alarms at the same property. We rarely exercise this. We typically, if we identify fire alarm systems that have been problematic, people that are responsible for those are put on notice to repair those. If they are problematic, we try to seek other means other than a punitive damage to get it repaired. But this is just a mechanism or another tool that we could use. But it's rarely used.
Got it. Thank you. I'm glad to hear we have teeth, because that's, we don't want to waste the Fire Department's time either. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Question on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have another first reading for the recorder. Would you please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill 3312 relating to the Edgewater Street-Walace Road Area Overlay Zone, creating new provisions and adopting revisions to the City of Salem Development Design Handbook.
All right. Counselor Bennett?
I'll move a staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Clem, to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am so pleased with this ordinance change to the Edgewater area. We started working on this about two and a half years ago. Our codes, while we say we want to incent redevelopment, can be problematic. And in this instance, in this area, they were. Property owner wanted to sort of redo the whole building, but retain what originally had been built in 1913 for doorway and windows, and just ran afoul of our code, which attempts to bring properties up to code, a redevelopment ordinance. But what this does is this adds an alternative standard for existing buildings. So, it removes the barriers, some of the barriers that we found on Edgewater for redevelopment. So, very excited to see this come forward, and hopefully spur more redevelopment in that area as well.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Here's a motion before us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Ordinance Bill 3412. Would the Recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 3412 granting a telecommunications franchise to Zayo Group LLC and declaring an emergency.
Counselor Bennett?
I'll move a staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have a fourth one, amending the Salem Revised Code Chapter 70. Would the Recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 3512 relating to the operation, maintenance, and inspection requirements for private stormwater facilities, amending SRC 70.001, adding SRC 70.115, 70.117, and 70.120, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the Council Advanced Substitute Ordinance Bill Number 35-12 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by Counselor Thomas. Is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Nanki.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a rework of the next ordinance bill, which is on second reading, which I will encourage you to vote no on. This cleans up and straightens out, I think, some language relative to the ability of Public Works Director to come onto property. It had to get warrants and created some requirements. But really, the City Attorney knows what it does. I'm not sure what it does exactly. I'm too tired right now to run through it. I'm sorry.
It does several things. The main thing it does is it specifically, the earlier ordinance covered all the utilities, and this is limited to the stormwater utility only. And so, that's probably the most important change.
Okay.
And it made some minor changes to the warrant provisions. And that's it.
So, if I don't want someone to come onto my property without a warrant, I put up a no trespassing sign, and they're going to have to go get a warrant.
They have to get a warrant. Because that's objective indication that you don't want anyone coming onto your property. That's right. That's right. The other ordinance used the term lawful means, which is a code for talk to the lawyer first. But apparently, that was not satisfactory.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for correcting this, too, for fixing it.
All right. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move a substitute motion, which is staff recommendation with the following modification under Section 4 SRC 70.120C, where it's talking about unoccupied properties. And I'll just read it as the way I would like to see it, and then I'll come back and identify the portion that's been removed. "If the property is unoccupied, the Director shall first make a reasonable effort to locate the owner or other person with control of the property and request entry. If the Director is unable after making a reasonable effort to locate the owner or other person with control of the property..." There's a deletion that happens right here, and it's replaced with, "Or if entry is refused by the owner or other person of control of the property, or if the Director is unable to locate the owner of other person with control of the property, the Director shall obtain an administrative search warrant from the Municipal Court or Circuit Court." If I could get a second for that, I'll tell you...
Second for discussion.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, and seconded by Counselor Clem.
So, the portion in that's been removed comes after the reasonable effort to locate the owner or person with control. Says the Director may enter the property, but shall, as soon as practicable, document the efforts made to locate the owner or other person, and inform the owner or other person of the entry. And basically, that's for people who don't just like no trespassing signs at every one of their, you know, private developments. It basically says, no one gave you permission. I could say, no, you can't come on. But if I'm not there, I can't say that without a sign. And basically, this just takes away the ability for no one being there to allow that entry to happen. And if I may ask a question, Robert Chandler had shot out a reply to an email, and talked about those facilities that are being monitored, and kind of where the City already has maintenance responsibilities, and kind of what we see, and what we do when we actually go out and have an issue.
All right. Well, we could ask you, Mr. Chandler, to give us a little enlightenment on this.
Sure. Robert Chandler, Assistant Director, Public Works. If I understand, the question, it's what do we do with our current approach to private stormwater facilities?
Right. The content of your longer email today?
Sure. The City currently has a program for inspecting stormwater facilities, stormwater detention facilities. Right now, well, in 2012, we will have inspected about, well, we will have inspected 940 stormwater detention facilities. Of that 940 stormwater detention facilities, 141 of those are public facilities, and we inspect, and we also conduct the maintenance required on those. The remainder, 841, is our private facilities. We are responsible for the maintenance of the outlet structures. But the maintenance of the actual facility itself is a responsibility of the property owner. On occasion, and we do conduct inspections of those facilities. There's an existing program. When we have those inspections, if we identify a maintenance problem, we'll notify the property owner, usually by letter. Typical issues with an above-ground detention facility, it needs to be mowed, or there's an excessive amount of trash, we send a letter out, and it gets fixed. We've never had a problem with it. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
In my entire 20 years of practicing municipal law, I think I've only seen the necessity of getting one of these warrants once. It's, you know, it's only the extremely rare situation. And for the constitutional law geeks, there are two kinds of warrants. You have warrants that are part of the criminal process under the Fourth Amendment, and you have administrative search warrants. And the legal standard is different. And the legal standard for administrative search warrants is not as rigorous as the standard for a warrant for a criminal proceeding. And the other thing to note is that if an emergency exists, that is an exception to the warrant requirement. So, staff would be able to go onto property without a warrant if there were an emergency.
And that's kind of the intent of, it happens massively and frequently, but why would we not want to be at a level that still guaranteeing people, if it's in a non-emergency situation, that they're not being searched without, one, their knowledge? And in the event that you've seen one in 30 years, I think it's nice to be at least erring on the side of protecting people's constitutional rights, even if there may be a lesser standard involved.
This is actually not necessary. And the reason that I typically include them in ordinances is because a lot of times, staff doesn't understand that they need a warrant. So, the purpose of these sections is more to inform staff that they need a warrant, rather than to establish some legal authorization to obtain a warrant.
Counselor Claussen, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Dr. Chandler. Just a clarifying question.
Sure.
I live on a piece of property that is extra-large, because I own the detention basin for my neighborhood. Is that a private stormwater utility? Or does that fall in the 141 that are city-maintained?
First of all, I'm looking at my notes here, get the numbers correct. My apologies. 119 are public, 841 are private. Sorry about that. As I understand your description, your facility is a private stormwater facility. It's not on property owned or operated by the city, and you're responsible for the maintenance of that facility.
Right. So, that would fall under this, what we're talking about here right now. It's an inspection of the private facility. And, okay. I'm just curious, clarifying.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
One point of clarification. This ordinance applies to facilities that are constructed after July 1, 2011.
Right. So, how does yours cost? Go ahead. Ah. No problem.
Counselor Clem?
If Council authorized the additional language that Counselor Nanki is talking about, this administrative search warrant, I think that's what you're adding. Does that inhibit Public Works from being able to do its job seriously?
No.
Yeah.
The only issue, Counselor Clem, is who do you present the warrant to? Because you get a warrant when entry has been refused. And so, if you can't locate the owner, you've got the warrant, but you don't have anyone to serve it on.
Yeah.
All right. All questions are answered? All right. We have a substitute motion on the floor. It was made by Counselor Nanki, and seconded by Counselor Clem. All those in favor of the substitute motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have a second reading, Ordinance Bill Number 3212. Would the City Recorder like to? I know, we're right at the time, aren't we? This is our last piece of business.
You've got one more thing. Why don't I give you 10 minutes to canvass the vote? I'll move a 15-minute extension. Say it.
It's been moved...
She's going to get us out.
We're going to get this done fast. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by, I don't know who seconded, Counselor Claussen, for a 15-minute extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, now. How many of you said nay? One, two, three. All right. The ayes have it, the extension will occur. Would the recorder please take care of the second reading?
One of those days we're up at our house, yeah.
Ordinance Bill Number 3212 relating to the Operation Maintenance and Inspection Requirements for Private Stormwater, Wastewater, and Water Systems, amending SRC 70.001, adding SRC 70.110 and 70.120. Counselor Clem?
No.
Counselor Bennett?
No.
Counselor Tesler?
No.
Counselor Nanki?
Nay.
Counselor Claussen?
Nay.
Counselor Dickey?
Nay.
Counselor Thomas?
Nay.
Counselor Blasey?
Nay.
Mayor Peterson? Nay. All right, thank you. Is anyone here for public comment on anything other than what were agenda items this evening? No public comment. And under new business, I have one quick item, and that is a proclamation, which I have right in front of me, for the general election results, November 6, 2012, whereas a general election was held on the 6th day of November 2012, at which candidates for certain offices and 11 ballot measures were voted upon, and whereas the results of the election have been recorded in the minute record of the council. Now, therefore, I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, proclaim and declare that at said election, Anna Peterson was duly elected mayor, Chuck Bennett was duly elected counselor, Ward 1, Brad Nanki was duly elected counselor, Ward 3, Diana Dickey was duly elected counselor, Ward 5, Warren Bednarz was duly elected counselor, Ward 7. And the following ballot measures were approved by the voters and are adopted. Ballot measures 24-333, 24-334, 24-335, 24-336, 24-337, 24-338, 24-339, 24-340, 24-341, 24-342, and 24-343. And it's signed by me this third day of December 2012. And there'll be a test in the morning on this?
Yeah.
On total acreage, as well as percentage of the vote based on individual acreages.
All right, we have no further business, unless we have any Counselors' items. All right, then we are adjourned.